And welcome and good morning to everybody who is joining us today. This is the 11th hearing of Portfolio Committee Two's Inquiry into Health, Outcomes and Access to Health and Hospital Services in Rural, Regional and Remote New South Wales. My name's Greg Donnelly and I'm the Chair of this inquiry. The inquiry is examining health outcomes, access to services, patient experience, planning and capital expenditure in rural, regional and remote New South Wales. Before I commence, I would like to acknowledge the Gadigal people, who are traditional custodians on which the land of the Parliament sits. I would also like to pay my respects to elders past, present and emerging of the Eora nation and extend that respect to other Aboriginals viewing this broadcast over the course of today. And we welcome you. Today's hearing is being conducted virtually. This enables the work of the committee to continue during COVID-19 without compromising the health, safety of members, witnesses and of course staff. As we break new ground with the technology, I would ask everyone's patience through any technical difficulties we may encounter over the course of the day. If participants lose their internet connection and are disconnected from the virtual hearing, they are asked to rejoin the hearing by using the same link as provided by the committee's secretary. Today, we will be hearing from a number of stakeholders based in and around Tumit, Wagga Wagga and the surrounding areas, including local councils, the Country Women's Association and importantly, community groups, as well as Aboriginal health groups and private individuals. I thank everybody, everyone for making the time to give evidence to this important inquiry. Before I commence, I'd like to make some brief comments about procedures for today's hearing. While parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses giving evidence today, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of their evidence at the virtual hearing. I therefore urge witnesses to be careful about comments you may make to the media or others after you have completed your evidence before the inquiry. Committee hearings are not intended to provide a forum for people to make adverse reflections about others under the protection of parliamentary privilege. In that regard, it is important that witnesses focus on the issues raised by the inquiry's terms of reference and avoid naming individuals unnecessarily. All witnesses have a right to procedural fairness according to the procedural fairness resolution adopted by the Legislative Council in 2018. There might be some questions that a witness could only answer if they had more time or with certain documents to hand. In such circumstances, witnesses are advised that they can take a question on notice and provide answers within 21 days. Today's proceedings are being streamed live and the transcript will be placed on the committee's website once it becomes available. And finally, a few notes on the virtual hearing etiquette to minimise disruption and assist our handside reporters. Can I ask committee members to clearly identify who questions are directed to? And could I ask everyone to please state their name when they begin speaking to answer the questions? Could everyone please mute their microphones when they're not speaking? Please remember to turn your microphones back on when you're getting ready to speak. If you start speaking whilst still muted, please start your question or answer again so it can be recorded into the transcript. Excuse me. Members and witnesses should avoid speaking over each other so we can all hear what's being said clearly. And finally, also to assist handside, may I remind members and witnesses to speak directly into their microphones and avoid making comments when their head is turned away from the microphone itself. So, good morning and welcome our first set of witnesses for this morning. What I'd like to do is go through the formality of the swearing or the firming of you all in for the thing of your, excuse me. We start with our representatives from the Leighton Shire Council and welcome warmly to both of you. I'll get you first to state your name, your title, position title, what, who you're representing here today, the formal title, and swear either an oath or an affirmation, whichever you prefer, the words of which should have been provided to you. And if for reason the words you don't have, just let us know and we'll provide them to you rapidly so you can use them. So we'll start with the mayor, councillor Paul Maiton, good morning. Ask you to deal with the formality for him, please.
Yeah, my name is Paul Maiton, I'm the mayor of Leighton Shire Council and I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thanks very much, Mayor, much appreciated you joining us this morning. We have also from the same Shire, Mrs Jackie Kruger, the General Manager, can I welcome you?
Good morning Chairman and Commissioner. I'm Jackie Kruger, General Manager of Leighton Shire Council. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mrs Kruger, welcome. Can we move now to the Norandra Shire Council? And a warm welcome to the mayor, councillor Shrinka. Can I invite you please to deal with the formality?
Thank you Chair, this is Neville Kusinka, councillor and mayor of Norandra Shire Council. I swear the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much, Kusinka. And could I also welcome now from the Norandra Shire Council, the General Manager, Mr Cowan, could you please proceed with the formality?
Thank you, Mr Chair and committee members. I am George Cowan, the General Manager of Norandra Shire Council and I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much, Mr Cowan. Well, welcome to all four of you. It's great to have you joining us today at our public hearing, albeit virtually. I have to say, in some sense, I'd love to be down your neck of the woods, that had been our plan, I have to say, many months ago. The whole committee were looking forward to coming down and spending some time, but we've obviously having to deal with what's before us, so whilst this is not the same as being down, enjoying your company and the beautiful area down there, we're doing it virtually. So we're looking forward to what we're going to be able to hear from yourselves. Can I just acknowledge first of all, the contributions through the respective submissions that have already been made? You're obviously well aware of this, but the Leighton Shire Council's submission stands as submission 633 for the inquiry, it's been received, processed and stands as a submission and therefore evidence to the inquiry and it's been uploaded to the inquiry's webpage. And equally with respect to Norandra's contribution, and thank you for that, that's submission number 165. That's been obviously provided, processed and stands also as submission to the inquiry and it's been uploaded onto the onto their webpage. So both of those stand as submissions and obviously evidence already provided to the inquiry and we thank you for those. What I'll do, if I could please, is invite both Shire councils to nominate one representative. I presume it'll be the mayor, but I won't be presumptuous to make an opening statement. And then once that's been done for both, we'll then open up for questions. There's representatives, as I'm sure you probably appreciate on the committee, from the Opposition Governor Crossbench and our practices to share the time between ourselves to just go through questions and go back and forth, which will take us through to 10 o'clock. So can I invite you to keep the opening statements reasonably short, if you possibly can? Open up the maximum time for the questioning, but I'll pass it over to Leighton Shire Council and Mayor Maiton. Will you be making that in statement?
Yes.
Welcome and please proceed.
Okay, good morning and thank you for the opportunity to address you this morning. As mayor of Leighton Shire, I represent a rural population of close to 11,500 residents in Groming. I acknowledge our registry nation this morning, on whose land Leighton Shire is located and acknowledges their elders past and present. Leighton is the birthplace of the Morangiragachan area, is arguably the most productive farming region in New South Wales. We are a busy and diverse community that contributes meaningfully to the economy of the state and the nation. Manufacturing agriculture and education are our biggest employers. We have a significant rice, cotton, citrus, walnut and beef processing plants in our Shire. These are big businesses and several operate 24/7. Leighton has also three high skills and six primary skills, two boarding schools, draws students from far and wide. Our Shire offers many highly skilled jobs, excellent options for a quality education, an incredible array of sporting facilities, an exciting arts and cultural sector and a thriving business sector. We have everything going for us as a growing and successful rural town, yet we find ourselves increasingly losing new retirees to the bigger regional centres like Wagga Wagga and Oring. When we ask why, we did the same thing. We want more reliable health and hospital services in our old age. Leighton is just not offering us that anymore. They don't want to say, Leighton used to offer us the healthcare we need. In fact, all our babies were born here and we never thought we'd leave the town we loved most. But today's medical services have eroded that significantly that we are left with no option but to move somewhere where the health services are more reliable. Commissioners, the situation is shameful in a country where we have the highest rate of doctors and nurses per capita. It is shameful what is occurring in rural farming communities who feed the nation, pay taxes and contribute significantly to the nation's wealth. Rural New South Wales deserves more than this. Our local health concerns are not limited to retirees and elderly. As the gaps in emergency services in Leighton become more widely known, parents of children who've born in Leighton have been heard to say that they are considering removing their children from our schools as they can't be sure their kids will get the medical attention they deserve if something was to go wrong. Without a reliable health service, our community feels vulnerable and is vulnerable. All we ask is for fair access to quality health services. We consider access to decent health services to be a basic human right. Let me be clear that as a rural community, we are not asking for anything unrealistic. We don't expect open heart surgery in Leighton or brain surgery or specialist burns unit, but we do expect, what we do expect are the basics. We expect to reliably receive basic treatment that saves lives and supports run-of-the-mill medical conditions. Our community is that concerned that two public meetings have been called in recent years to discuss the situation. Council has also completed two community surveys in the last three years and on both occasions, public confidence in local health services has come up as significantly wanting. In a rural population of 11,500, Leighton residents expect an ambulance to collect us in a reasonable timeframe when our lives are at risk. We expect to arrive at our local hospital and be treated on site, not sent away, except under the most dire of circumstances. We expect a doctor, that is a real life doctor, not a doctor on the phone, to be available to respond when it is a life and death situation. We expect babies to be delivered at the hospital, supported by practised midwives and at least one experienced obstetrician. Five years ago, 100 plus babies per year were successfully being birthed at Leighton Hospital. Today it is less than 10. In our submission, we have provided the commission three examples of inadequate emergency services. A teenage boy with a head concussion at a local school who waited 45 minutes for an ambulance and was not able to be treated at the Leighton Hospital as there was no doctor available. The decision dissenting the Griffith Hospital was questioned by a paramedic and the young man was subsequently flown to Sydney, which may well have saved his life. We provide the story of a 77-year-old man who passed away after an ambulance took 41 minutes to reach him, even though his home was less than five minutes from the ambulance station. Had he known help wasn't immediately on its way, he would have arranged for his neighbour to take him to the hospital instead of waiting, who must have felt like a lifetime. Finally, we provide the story of Leighton volunteers who are increasingly becoming the first responders to serious and sometimes fatal incidents due to the lack of available ambulance services. These people are not clearly trained but are being increasingly relied on to do work that is openly outside the scope of practice as volunteer rescuers. When we question what is occurring, we find we have three ambulance vehicles in Leighton, but only enough staff for one and a non-existent on-call system for backup. We also find that our ambulance service is often occupied transporting patients from Leighton Hospital to base hospitals for routine assessments. In our view, ambulances should be available for real emergencies. When we question what is occurring with the hospital VMOs that's visiting medical officers, we find there is no obligation for local GPs to be on the roster. And we find that a permanent CMO, career medical officer, cannot be attracted if the pay is much lower than other states. We used to have doctors on call 24/7. Now we are lucky to have a doctor available from 8am to 8pm, if at all. We sometimes find nurses managing emergency services alone, feeling unsupported, sometimes out of their depth and vulnerable. This of course can lead to burnout. It is disappointing when we find trained migrant doctors living in Australia and willing to move to the bush, not being actively supported onto a pathway to achieve full AMA registration. This is a wasted opportunity. When we question why our theatre has stopped being used despite a major upgrade, we are given too many excuses, from the total wall paint to the air conditioning system, then the theatre staff being out of practice, most recently to the recovery room being marginally too small. These are all ridiculous excuses. As communities, we feel accountability is lacking, transparency is missing and genuine cooperation is absent. What is very apparent to us is that health services in rural areas are fragmented and there is a lack of coordination and flexibility between what is funded federally and what is funded by the state. To our community, health is health and we are confused about why services have to operate in silos. As Leighton Shire Council, we have strong proponents of community health service plans for each community. These health service plans need to identify community health needs and goals, respond to them holistically and be transparent and accountable about service outcomes. These health service plans need local governance and local leadership with full accountability and should work in tandem with state and parental services. The clinical and financial frameworks for these local health services plans need to allow for greater flexibility and more innovation. This is so important to our council and community, we have allocated $100,000 to advances. We hope that this inquiry will go some way to addressing a health system that is broken and that new ways of working will be created that see more efficient and effective use of resources at the local level. Thank you Commissioners for considering our plight as rural communities and recommending to government ways in which we can be assured of the level of basic health and hospital services we need and deserve. We look forward to responding to your questions today, thank you.
Well, Mayor Maiton, thank you very much for what is a very thorough and frank opening statement. It contains much information, not just in general terms, but very specific ones as well. And I'm sure that will lead to some questions, in fact, probably a number of questions from committee members. I'm just wondering if it would be possible after the presentations today, if you'd be able to email through to our committee secretary at that opening statement, if that's possible? Because that will enable us to, with absolute precision, get that into our hands side, so thank you very much.
That's okay.
Can I move now to, I gather it'll be councillor Kusinka, the mayor of Norandra? Will you be making the next statement?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair.
Please proceed.
Yes, Neville Kusinka, Mayor of Norandra Shire Council. And thank you to you and the committee members for the opportunity to speak today. Before I commence, I would also like to acknowledge that we're Aregri people, who are the traditional custodians of the land and pay my respect to their people both past and present. So as mayor, I represent a community of 6,000 people, including a high proportion of Indigenous Australians. And 6,000 might not say many to people from the city, but bear in mind, they're spread over many thousands of acres and again, providing food and wealth for the nation. We have an excellent local medical practice led by Dr Joe Romeo, a well-equipped and modern hospital and two nursing homes providing aged care. We have a local ambulance service and council runs a community transport service. So all should be well. The local medical practice run by Dr Joe Romeo, who himself is a GP and atheist, recruits and trains overseas qualified registrar doctors who provide the primary healthcare to the Shire residents. Those registrars require sponsorship, training and supervision depending upon their individual qualifications, experience and abilities. Changes to the federal arrangements around overseas trained doctors in November 2019 made that process more challenging. Training places have been limited and actually passing exams made more difficult. Simple things like language is a barrier, both in the surgery and in exams. There is little or no feedback provided to the supervisor by the examining body. Dr Joe Romeo loses out financially through reductions in workforce incentive payment for time spent training these new doctors and for lost time in actually seeing his own patients. I know you've heard all this before, but no Australian trained doctors have been recruited to Norandra. More and more services are being centralised in Wagga Wagga and Griffiths, resulting in residents having to travel for specialists, allied health and hospital services. Two Aboriginal medical services are located in Wagga and Griffiths with very limited outreach. That would be fine for people who can travel and can afford to pay. Transporting patients to Wagga has its own problems, including sometimes overloading services at Wagga. When ambulances are used for the purpose of transporting patients, there is a risk that a local ambulance will not be available for an emergency and one will have to travel from another town, causing a delay in attending incidents with potentially fatal outcomes. Mental health services in Norandra are also very limited and the subject of many community complaints. Council's Community Transport Service, this is to June 2021, has provided over 10,400 patient trips, 85% of which are out-of-town medical purposes. 210,263 kilometres travelled by staff and our wonderful volunteers. 1,400 active clients, 7,655 volunteer hours. The Community Transport Service is not available for people once they enter an aged care facility, which becomes a challenge for folk needing specialist care, including dialysis. Situation is typified by the difficulty in obtaining COVID vaccines here in Norandra. Town has only last week received Moderna and reasonable amounts of Pfizer, following many phone calls, emails, approaches to both federal and state agencies. We greatly value the work of this inquiry, believing that health services are one of the most important issues facing rural New South Wales. So thank you and the General Manager, George Cowan, and I will be happy to answer questions on council's submission. Thank you again.
Thank you very much, Mayor Kusinka. Once again, a very detailed and frank opening statement and we thank you for that. Now, I'll move to questioning, now, I'm just looking at the time. We've effectively got around 21, sorry, withdraw that. We've got roughly about eight, nine minutes for each group. Our next witnesses are expected at five past, so we'll try and take it through as close as we can with these witnesses to five past to maximise the questioning and we'll commence with the honourable last second.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Thank you, Mr Mayors, and thank you, General Managers, for your submissions and your opening statements. Leighton Mayor, your submission shows a hospital under stress in a community that has lost confidence in its 66-bed hospital. How do you feel? How do you feel when people in the community raise with you that the operating theatres in your local hospital have been dormant since 2016? What do you say to them when they raise that with you?
Well, it's very hard to answer the question because we get mixed messages from the Morangiragachan Local Health District. So somebody had a submission, there's an excuse after the excuse all the time. So essentially, they're saying that when something like the operating theatre is not functioning, they see that it's a threat to other services that may be here existing in the hospital now. They feel that they'll be moved on to the larger hospitals like Griffiths and Wagga and then there'll be a decline at our hospital which could lead to further losses of other services there. That's how the community feel about it. Because there was a big fanfare when that operating theatre opened. You know, we thought in carries that we were going to have this theatre here in our local hospital that was going to take us well into the future. It took a few years and it's been long we've done it for all its period. It's very hard to explain to the community.
So what's actually, so what's been happening for the last five years with these? Have any operations taken place in the last five years in the new operating theatres?
My understanding is I don't know exact time when the last operation was, but it was many years ago. The doctors are going to Norandra Hospital, but the mayor would probably recognise that in Norandra Neville and also to Griffiths Hospital. So essentially, those procedures are carried out at either Norandra or Griffiths Hospitals.
But what do local residents say when they discover that? For example, you highlighted the young man with a brain injury, 77-year-old man who died waiting. What does the community say? What does the community want?
The community wants us as a council to do more to try and get outcomes, in real outcomes. Myself, I've been on the local health community councils for years and years and many years and essentially, we are a conduit for the community to the hospital and the health system, but essentially it's not working. We're there, we want to be a body of people, like a council, representing the community so that we can get the real answers and a real understanding of the pathway of where we're heading. And at this moment, we're struggling to comprehend and understand and we're not seeing that real transparency we need to see, give us a clear indication of what really is happening. And truly, it is just, it is mind-boggling to me as mayor to lead this committee here, I can't answer the questions.
Now, Mr Mayor, have you heard the excuse from the state government that the recovery room was built 11 centimetres too small? Therefore, meaning that the operating theatre couldn't be used?
Yes, we have heard that and as I've said, we hear those things and it alarms us because we had three different reasons given to us why the theatre could not open. And now we've lost the staffing or those that are adequately trained to be functioning here with the doctors when they do those operations. So it's just going into a decline and we'll dedicate it back.
So you have a 66-bed hospital with operating theatres that have lain dormant for five years. You have very little maternity services. I think in your submission, you said that you've gone from 100 babies a year born at that hospital to less than 10 and no doctors at certain times. So what does the community, sorry?
The reasoning behind that is there's no obstetrician. So if there's no obstetrician at our hospital, essentially, they can't take what they might consider a risky burst as such. So it's only what they consider the straightforward burst, they'll take on and that could range between eight and 10, I understand, over the last few years. And that's with the midwife-led model. We were hoping that would be a temporary arrangement, but as it is now, the community are asking, what if we get back to having a birthing at our Leighton Hospital, having obstetrician and trainer available to help with those birtings at the hospital? So again, it's one of those things that we feel that we're just having more and more fragmentation and things taken from the hospital. So very hard to inform the community. My children were born there, my wife, my wife's family were born there and we just see that we should have at least that basic position of saying, you can have your baby here at our Leighton Hospital, a population of 11,500 people. And we just find it quite amazing that they say the new midwife-led model is adequate for our community. It's servicing our community but not the needs of our community.
Mr Mayor, excuse the bluntness of the next question, but what is actually occurring at Leighton Hospital? What services are being provided at the 66-bed hospital? So if it's gone from 100 births a year down to eight to 10, operating theatres vacant, dormant, ghost wards? What is actually happening at that hospital?
Well, that's probably my question we need to be, or you need to be asking everyone actually because it's a little bit hard for me here, I understand that outside, that the basic patients are there with maybe minor illnesses. I don't even know how many beds are vacant up there at the present time. Obviously, we have the emergency department where people come in and sometimes are admitted. You would see in our submission that in many cases, they're taken somewhere else or they may choose to go somewhere else because they're fearful there'll be no doctor on call. So we see that we've already got to a position of So, we see that we've already got to a position of losing a lot of the... I suppose what the hospital should be doing for our community to now having a bigger threat because we're saying that maybe we don't have adequate staffing there to service the needs of our community. That in itself is posing a real threat to us as a community going forward.
So, Mr Mayor, how do you feel when you hear that in Sydney we're having $200 million upgrades to hospitals, and in your hospital, you can't have... You don't have births, you don't have doctors, and you have ghost wards? What would you say to the new premier about the need for rural health in your area?
Well, I certainly say that we need to have that transparency from our community in conjunction with MLHD and question the people that know and understand what's happening. Don't just put money to something and say, well, there's some money and all things should be okay. Question and understand what the real needs are of our community and what we can do to improve the hospital services and hopefully retain our hospital services that we have now, because we are concerned. So, yes, money itself won't fix the problem, but money will help. But certainly, it's this system that is not working as we would believe it should.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Mayor, and Mr Chair. I'm aware my time has expired.
Thank you very much, General... And I'd just thank the crossbench for allowing the Honourable Lois Fing to proceed with this question. So, Lois, welcome, and please proceed.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you very much to both of the councils, councils that I know very well and have worked closely with in my time here in Parliament. And I really appreciate the effort you've put into the submissions and also making yourself available today to share your experiences and concerns with healthcare. Look, I just wanted to ask each council in turn. Obviously, part of the issue is around the attracting and retention of doctors. And we know that in Wagga, for example, we're starting to look at the model where we have a rural medical health training facility that will start to train doctors. Have you had the opportunity to have some input into with regard to placements and offers of support to those schools to give those students the experience that they need to have in regional areas to have them attracted and kept in areas such as Leighton, Norandra, and even west of those two towns into the future? We'll start with Norandra if we could, and Mayor Koshenko.
Yes. Thank you. No, we haven't had any input in that regard. We certainly welcome the initiative. How effective that will be, though, I don't know. Hopefully, there will be incentives for those trainees to actually train in the bush, which is what I think Mr McCormick was alluding to, and then they might stay here. So, to answer the question, no.
And Leighton?
Could I pass over to the General Manager, please, to answer that question?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're definitely aware of the initiative and applaud Murrumbidgee Local Health District for setting up this system and recognising that rural GPs need to be recognised as specialist doctors and supported in the same way as other specialists should be. In terms of direct support, we've... In Leighton, I think in our submission, we made reference to the fact that we've had migrant doctors say to us that they're interested to move to Leighton. They have full doctors' qualifications, but they don't have everything that's required to be AMA registered. So, those doctors, we've drawn to the attention of the MLHD for many, many months and asked for support for them to be put on a pathway, because it's not... You know, we're seeing a lot of doctors graduate in Australia, but not many coming to the bush. So, when you have a trained doctor who's willing to live in the bush, what we really want to see is a pathway for them to close any gaps that they might have so that they can get full registration. At this point in time, we haven't quite seen that link through to the local hospital in Wagga that's putting on this new programme. If we can get these ideas dovetailing together, it would be enormously helpful.
Thank you. And look, I appreciate that my time is shortly to expire, and I know my colleague, the Honourable Natasha McLaren-Jones, has a question. But I guess just leading on from that, given that you haven't been able to have any input into that programme as such, we've heard particularly yesterday that a programme around rural generalists, where, you know, a GP is trained in not only being a GP, but other services like obstetrics and anesthesiology is important for smaller centres, I would imagine, like Norandra and Leighton. I'm guessing that both councils would support that sort of training regime, that rural doctors have that more general skill base that they can support a hospital?
Yes, we certainly would from Leighton, yes.
And also Norandra would indeed, because that's part of the issue at the moment, that GPs are, you know, perhaps a dying race.
Yeah. Well, look, I'll pass over to my colleague, the Honourable Natasha McLaren-Jones. Thank you so much both for appearing today and making your submission, and I'll pass now to my colleague.
Thank you, the Honourable Lois Fing. The Honourable Natasha McLaren-Jones?
No, I'm happy to... I don't have any questions at the moment. Thank you.
Okay. Well, on that basis, we'll move then to the crossbench. And can I please invite the Deputy Chair, Honourable Emma Hurst?
Thank you, Chair. I have a question for Merkashenka. In your opening statement, you talked about the council's transport service. And certainly, we've heard a lot from, you know, a variety of charities, for example, during our hearings into this inquiry, that often where there's big gaps, that other people are having to fill those gaps and actually fund for services, you know, as Band-Aid solutions. And I mean, it sort of sounds like the same thing's happening with your own community transport service. I'm assuming that costs the council a lot of money and that, you know, it's difficult to have the local community step in. What's the solution here? Do you feel that that's something that the council should continue to pay for going forward? Or is there something else that should be done instead?
I might have the General Manager respond to that one, because he's more familiar with the cost. It's a shared cost.
Yeah. Look, if I can just say, the community transport service that we run is jointly funded by state, federal and council. It's actually delivered in the main by volunteers, so local people who volunteer their time. And as you can see by the numbers that the mayor provided, it's very extensive. An example of that is we've got five folk that go to Griffiths three times a week for dialysis, and that's a whole day job. So, the volunteer leaves here about 5:00, quarter to 6:00 in the morning, drives to Griffiths, stays there all day, and then brings those folk back home. And they do that three times a week. So, at the moment, we're relying very heavily on those volunteers. How much longer that will last, I don't know. You know, across society, volunteering is shrinking. As these volunteers get older, it becomes more and more problematic.
And we also heard yesterday that the demand for services was also increasing. Is that something that you're worried about going forward if volunteers are shrinking? Is there also potentially going to be a greater demand on this transport service as well?
Oh, look, I think, and COVID may have had something to do with this, but our trip numbers are up 50% on the previous year in the financial year to 30 June. So, the need is definitely growing. Mayor mentioned that we have a large Aboriginal component in our community. Those folk can't just drive themselves to Wagga and Griffiths whenever they feel like it, and they're heavily reliant on the service. So, yes.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think in the opening statement, you said that that transport service isn't available for people in aged care. If I've got that right, I'm just wondering, you know, what happens there when there's an emergency? Is that where ambulances are having to be pulled in or family members?
Yes, typically, it's family members. And I'm actually dealing with an issue at the moment where one of those patients who require dialysis is moving into an aged care facility here, and they won't... Once they become a permanent resident in aged care, they're not eligible for the community service because it is jointly funded by the federal government as aged care facilities. So, they won't allow us to cross-subsidise. So, that falls back then on the family to do that transport three times a week to Griffiths. It's really horrendous. We have approached Murrumbidgee Local Health District about the possibility of having a chair or two installed in the hospital here. There's plenty of room, but the response we get back from them is that it's a staffing issue. Same with the birthing. So many staff these days are specialised, specialist people, and they're simply not available to come to the smaller hospitals.
And do you have situations where family members aren't able to step in and do that transport, and what happens there?
I guess that's part of the decision-making. And I know that a number of folk, when they've got to the point of needing aged care full-time, they've had to go to a service in Wagga or Griffiths. They just can't sustain living in a smaller community and travelling as much as they do because obviously, their medical needs increase at the same time.
I have to move to Kate Fermin, if we could, please, Deputy Chair. So, Kate Fermin?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you both for appearing today and for your submissions. Just wanted to go to Leighton Council, maybe to you, Mayor Matam. And I do, yeah, your submission just had a lot of information and was very valuable. So, thank you for that. And I'll just point out, just wanting to you to comment on a few things. Given the evidence that you have given us in relation to Leighton Hospital and the fact that it, to be honest, it appears to be deliberately being run down, and we have heard quite a bit of evidence from witnesses in relation to rural hospitals, kind of, which is very similar. So, does it... It does appear that there is almost a deliberate strategy to run some of these rural hospitals down to the ground. Would you agree with that statement?
Well, generally, the community assign that, but we need to understand, I think, $2.5 million has been spent at our hospital right now for the emergency department now. Yes, that's great, that's being spent in the emergency department, but we're concerned about the services and of the hospital system that we're worried about because we don't even know what the budget is going forward. We don't see that sort of stuff anymore, and that's why we need to develop this local community health plan so that we fully understand what the 10-year plan is, if you like, of that hospital and the services that are linked with the hospital. We need to understand that better.
Yeah, so this comes down to my next question, actually. You mentioned in your submission the fact that the local health advisory committees no longer have a say in local health services planning. So, my understanding then is, from your submission, is that they did have a say and they no longer do. Do you know the history of that to inform the committee about?
Well, many of our community and some councillors suggested we go back to the old board system. They had the board that used to run, and the board, the local members had say in what was happening. They had more information. Then when they went to the local health committee, what's called local health advisory committee, essentially, it's there to... Supposed to be a link with the health system in our community, but it just doesn't happen. We don't seem to get that information that we need or have a clear indicator or clear indicators on where we're heading for the future. And I feel to some degree helpless that as mayor and among the committee that we can't, I suppose, answer those critical questions that our committee are asking us to do. So, that's why we want to work in conjunction with MLHD and understand better what the pathway is for, and we want to be a part of that pathway. We'll do whatever we can to work with it to ensure that we have the adequate health services that we should have for our community. So, yeah, we're not just complaining about it. We're saying we believe we can have solutions if we can be more involved and that can be more transparent.
So, that's the... I understand. Is that the council or is that basically most people, including health professionals and clinicians in Leighton, don't... They're trying to have input into health services planning, and they're unable to because the LHD and PHN are pushing back on that?
Well, it's hard for me to answer what they're doing. That's why the local health plan that we're talking about is to try and encompass the doctors and the services, the aged care services and the ambulance, the whole lot. They all have a combination so that we get a better understanding. I just feel we're living along, and I just feel if we can invest a bit of time in being a partner with MLHD and other agencies, that we can help speed up the system to ensure that we have confidence within our community about where we sit going forward. At the moment, there's very little confidence, unfortunately.
Can I just check with Norandra Council then? Is that similar in terms of lack of access to health services planning by people at the local level? And do you have recommendations in that regard?
What I... We can't just have health as a business, for example, and a numbers game. And we need governments to understand that how important our communities are to the whole of Australia. And so, sometimes we can't get the numbers, but, like, for example, a local organisation wanted to buy a dialysis machine and donate it to the hospital, but it wasn't going to be any use because we couldn't actually man that and have the people there to operate it. So, that's my question is, you know, do people understand that the importance of the rural communities? Yes, we're only 6,000 people, but what we contribute to the nation is extremely important. And so, it's not just a numbers game. Do you have anything to add to that, George?
I just have one last question, if I can. This is just... Thank you. This is just in relation to, again, the Leighton submission, which highlighted the lack of registered nurses. You stated that they're short, that your Leighton Hospital is short at least five RNs on the wards alone, that existing nurses are working multiple shifts for extended periods, which of course leads to fatigue and burnout. Is part of this because of nurses leaving for retirement or fatigue and burnout? Why aren't the positions being filled? Would you just care to expand on that situation?
We certainly don't get all the detail. We are aware of at least a couple of cases where nurses have chosen to leave the system. And I'm not going to speak on their behalf, however, they have given their reasons. I do know that this two nurse practitioner position's been advertised for at least a couple of years, I think. So, the issue is that we're not filling the gaps. One of the issues is that we're not filling the gaps up there for those qualified people to be there to service our needs in the first place. We need to get more information and understand what we, as a council, can do to try and hold that process. And as I said earlier, with the CMO, the senior mo's position has been advertised for quite some time. We don't have any taken. We have logins that are coming in periodically, but we don't know at any time if we were at the hospital today, is there going to be a doctor there to service the needs of our community? We don't ever get the indication of what's happening near the hospital. Our community should be told and should be aware that where we don't have a doctor available, unless it's an absolute emergency case, we should at least be aware. Some people choose to then have to take their child to Griffiths Hospital because they believe they're going to have a better chance. In fact, there's even been cases where they went to Norandra because they thought they had a better chance of seeing a doctor. So, that's really where it's at, too. We don't have enough adequate information for us to do what we want to do. But with our local community plan, health plan that we're putting forward, we believe that we will get the relevant information, which will then give us a clear pathway and we can set a plan for the future. At this moment, we're struggling to comprehend and understand what that plan is.
Well, that's brought us to our conclusion, and to the mayors and general managers, thank you very much for making yourselves available today. We know that you're very busy. Thank you uh, very much for making yourselves available today. We know that you're very busy. Um, uh, the uh, evidence has been um, very detailed um, and measured. Uh, but I can assure you, we can hear uh, in your voices, um, dare I say, a, a cry for uh, listening to uh, your, your needs in your communities, which you are representing very, very well. And can I thank you once again for your time, um, your submission? And can I make a special uh, thanks for you to pass on to all the outstanding volunteers uh, in the communities you represent who are stepping up uh, and assisting to deal with these matters? Um, their contribution is incalculable to, to helping their fellow residents and citizens uh, in their communities with, with health and medical issues. Uh, and we undertake to do the best we can as a committee to produce, produce a report and, and recommendations that will, that will improve their lots. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We'll move on to our next witnesses. It'll be a rapid uh, changeover, so uh, please stay online. And uh, welcome our next witnesses. Uh, hear from you Andrew when you're ready, Andrew. Um, and can I welcome Cecilia, our, our next witnesses um, uh, to our public inquiry this morning. Uh, witnesses uh, from uh, an organisation that is uh, very historic. And it's, it's um, time of being with us, but in the way in which it's represented uh, and provided advocacy uh, and services uh, to our citizens uh, living outside the major metropolitan areas. And of course, we're talking about the Country Women's Association and we welcome the two representatives today. Um, we need our formality get through first, which is the, the, the swearing or affirming of our two witnesses in first before we move to the opening statement and questions. So could I please um, invite uh, starting with uh, Ms. Gorman to um, introduce yourself, your full name, uh, your title, position title, and swear either an oath or affirmation, uh, whichever you choose, the words of which should be presented to you. And if not, please let us know. So Ms. Gorman.
Hello, my name is Adeya Garmin. I'm the Policy Manager for the CWA of New South Wales.
Welcome.
And I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now is the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. And uh, the same with uh, Mrs. McLean. Could I invite you to do the same?
Thank you. Um, my name is Linda McLean. I'm from the Hillstone branch of CWA. I'm the agriculture and environment officer for the branch as well. Uh, the oath, I swear that the evidence now about to be hidden by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Uh, thank you very much, Mrs. McLean. And can I acknowledge both of you uh, and acknowledge that we have received uh, submissions from both the, the organisation at large, the New South Wales branch. Um, and that stands as uh, submission 445 uh, to the inquiry that's been uh, received. Processed as a submission to the inquiry and it's been uploaded onto the inquiry's webpage. And, and uh, and we particularly welcome the contribution from the uh, the Hillstone branch. And thank you very much for the preparation of that. That's uh, been received, processed and also stands as a submission. Submission uh, 712 to the inquiry. And as you would both appreciate, they both as uh, uh, receive submissions uh, make up now formal uh, evidence to the inquiry. And we thank you for that. Um, will um, perhaps uh, get things underway with an, an opening statement? And I'm not quite sure whether you wish to uh, share between yourselves or do a single opening statement? What, what would you prefer? What would you prefer?
I think we're going to do one each, Chair.
Please, well, could you, I think it's appropriate then as, as the policy manager, if you could please proceed, that would be great.
Fantastic. Good morning Chair, Deputy Chair and Committee Members. Next year, the Country Women's Association of New South Wales marks 100 years. It was formed in 1922 to address isolation and a lack of health facilities. At that time, the members worked tirelessly to set up baby healthcare centres, fund bush nurses, build and staff maternity wards, hospitals, rest homes and many other types of community service. To this day, addressing a lack of rural health services remains a priority issue for the members of the CWA. We are very welcoming of this inquiry. We think it is something that has been needed for a very long time. In our submission to this inquiry, we firstly present longstanding health-related policy of the CWA. Policies democratically voted on at each year's state conference after going through a rigorous process of ensuring motions are valid, researched and relevant. Every year since its, since its inception, health and health services for the bush has been a significant part of the agenda for the CWA. Some more recent issues put forward, for example, are seeking more public cancer clinics in regional areas, more services for perinatal anxiety, depression and support, more registered nurses, more enrolled nurses, more mental health clinicians and psychologist services, cardiac bus visits, more blood and blood products stored in rural hospitals and the availability of maternity care and continuity of care for pregnancy. Are just some of these examples. There are many ways to start to address such a huge task. One idea that has come through the CWA of New South Wales is a rural loading incentive payment through Medicare, for example. We've also surveyed our members for the purposes of this inquiry. We were flooded with examples and stories about people's experiences in regional health. We overwhelmingly heard about a lack of access, significant wait times for services and people faced with the impossible decision of staying on a waitlist, which they don't know how long it will be, or uprooting everything to go to the city for treatment. A lot of the time, there is no choice. It is interesting to note that over 52% of our respondents do believe that the quality of care in the regions is on par to the city, but there just aren't enough medical professionals, staff, infrastructure, equipment to provide an equivalent level of care to that which they could get in the city. What this says to us is that the health professionals that are out there are doing an excellent job with very little resources and very little support. We are calling for a significant increase in funding for recruiting and retaining more permanent health professionals and staff, upgrading of hospitals and health services, reversing the decline in maternity services and birthing units from within hospitals, a significant increase in psychological services and many more. The issue needs ongoing review and evaluation in terms of health outcome, uh, health outcomes. And we are hopeful this inquiry is just the first step.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you very much. And that uh, opening statement sits very nicely with the, the comprehensive submission that's been provided by the New South Wales branch. So thank you very much. Uh, could I invite um, the next starting statement uh, from the Hillstone branch?
Thank you Chair, Deputy Chair and Members. The Hillstone branch of CWA has a strong commitment towards health issues in our town, which has a population of approximately 1,400 people. The branch is concerned with women's health issues, mental health services, local doctor and local pharmacist availability, and the use of telehealth is the only solution for rural and remote services. It is unfair and inequitable that an individual had to travel up to four hours to Aubrey bypassing Wagga as they had insufficient beds in order to access specialised psychiatric care due to the nearest major centre, Griffith, not being able to, to provide that facility. Griffith has a population of approximately 27,000 people, large enough, I would have thought, to have permanent psychiatrists on duty at the hospital. These lengthy trips to access medical services is extremely difficult on both the patient and their families. Our branch is concerned by the apparent lack of psychiatrists and clinical psychologists in New South Wales. Both are very real problems. Both state and federal governments need to address how this problem can be fixed. Funds need to be made available, giving incentives to young medical students and those already practising to take up psychiatry. There needs to be funds made available to these trained people as their, as an incentive to nurture regional New South Wales. There needs to be funds provided for beds for psychiatric care and funds available to those living in rural and remote New South Wales to access these services. The system needs to be put in place that is unique to rural and remote New South Wales that allows for doctors and pharmacists to be relieved from their duties for much needed downtime and or professional development without leaving our towns vulnerable for lengthy periods of time. Telehealth is not the only solution for rural and remote medical services. I'm sure if the city folk had to rely on telehealth for a majority of their health outcomes, they too would be reluctant to take up the service. Imagine if you had to discuss a person's health issues in a forum like what we have today. I'm sure you would be hesitant to divulge what may be required. It can be difficult to build trust and rapport within these forums without a personal face-to-face connection first. Basically, CWA Hillstone branch would like to see equitable access to services for all living in rural New South Wales in relation to their health outcomes. Thank you.
Uh, well, thank you very much, Mrs. McLean. And um, I have to say that, that's also a very good, uh, clear and something statement. And um, it's very nice to your six-page submission, which I have to say is very well-written and is uh, rich with information and detail, which I'm sure is going to lead to some questions from committee members. So we'll now pass to committee members. Uh, we have the time, uh, which will take us through to 10:50 AM. So we'll divide our time between the three groups and we'll commence with uh, about 11 or so minutes each. So we'll commence with the honourable what's said.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, CWA. And I acknowledge the historic and influential rural body that you are and why your organisation came about. Um, Mrs. McLean, do you find it strange that 100 years ago, the CWA was established to improve rural and regional health? And you're still fighting the same battle?
It is strange that we are fighting the same battle. Um, but things have improved along the way, but not to the level that they should be in today's modern age.
Uh, how do you feel when you hear that we've had evidence that hospitals are without doctors, unused operating theatres, we heard that this morning, uh, operating theatres dormant for five years, a reliance on telehealth, avoidable deaths, lack of medical supplies, including blood products and no maternity services or very limited maternity services in communities? How do you feel when you hear that?
I feel very, I suppose, angry, yeah. Um, and it's just unfair.
Um, Ms. Garwin, how do you, how do you feel and what is the feedback that you get from your members across the state?
I guess I feel disappointed. Um, it's sort of an unnecessary state that we're, that we're in. Um, members tell me all the time they feel like second-class citizens. And I guess, as Linda said, unfair, just plain unfair that there's this sort of um, treatment to people just because of where they live.
Um, this is not my view, but this is what we've, we've heard other people and other, other, other evidence of this committee for people to say, well, you decide to live in a rural and regional community and that's what happens when you live in a remote part of New South Wales. That's not my view, but that's what doctors have said, that people have told them.
Yes, we do hear that as well. And you know, it's funny because you hear that, but at the same time you hear about um, you know, strategies to alleviate the, the traffic problems in the city and the overcrowding and that sort of thing. So um, on the one hand, uh, I think, you know, we want people to be moving to the regions. But on the other hand, they're not going to do that if there isn't something as essential like health, health services to, to incentivise that. So it's um, yeah, it's disappointing to hear that. There's no reason why it has to be that way, simply because of, of where someone lives.
Um, Mrs. McLean, now you raised psychiatric care. I understand that in southwest New South Wales, there are huge areas where there are no, there's no psychiatric support in any sense, there's no mental health workers. Can you tell me what um, what is your experience and your members tell you about psychiatric care in southern, in southwestern New South Wales?
I can speak for, for Hillstone and the Griffith regions.
Yeah.
Um, southwestern New South Wales. Um, if you have an issue and it was, it starts from Hillstone, you would go to Griffith and from Griffith you would be seen by the doctor on duty. And they would do obviously an assessment as to what's happening in your position. And then you would be either transferred to Wagga, Wagga would be the next place that you would go. And if Wagga is not, doesn't have any beds available, you're transferred to Aubrey.
So how, how many kilometres would that be from Hillstone?
From Hillstone to Griffith, you're talking 110 kilometres. From Hillstone to Wagga, you probably another two hours, so at least another 200 kilometres and another hour on from Wagga to Aubrey, that's taking that route. Um, you're looking at probably another hour and a half maybe, so.
So you, so five.
Up to, up to four hours or more to get to. If you had to go to Aubrey, you'd be looking at up to four hours at least.
So what do families do if someone has to be four to five hours away from their family for psychiatric care, psychiatric support? What does that, what does that do to, to rural and regional families and to people needing support?
Well, it disrupts the family. Um, you know, you probably find that if that person does have access to a vehicle, most do, but some people, if you're um, on benefit or, or something like that, um, you might not have the um, means to drive yourself to Aubrey or Wagga to meet up with the family member who, who, who was um, having the psychiatric care. So therefore they, you know, they might not be able to travel all that way. So they stay in Hillstone and the person who's receiving the care is unattended by family members. There's no outside input into this care situation. So probably not explaining this very well, but.
You are, you are.
That's right, Kate.
You're very clear. Now, you talked about the challenges of tele, of telehealth. Now, we know that in rural and regional areas, many areas, that um, nurses um, are forced into a situation where they are, on weekends have to rely on telehealth. What are your views about telehealth?
Um, my views on telehealth is it's not the only solution. Um, we need other outcomes. We need people to be had access to, people need people to communicate and to get their message across. And um, the telehealth system, even the way it's set up, you know, you might have a screen that's quite large up on the, the wall. And you know, the person sits quite distance from it. It's not like me sitting here at my desk with a personal laptop, just looking one-on-one. You have probably maybe a bit more connection with that. So how that whole situation's set up and, you know, um, if you've got someone who's having psychiatric care or having an assessment, um, sitting there, you know, just looking up at the screen and, you know, their mind might be wandering, you don't know what they're thinking. Um, it's, it's very hard to get them to try and focus on the situation that's in front of them. So um.
Um, Ms. Ms. Gar, Garman, you, you were nodding during that. Do you find similar experiences and feedback from your members about um, telehealth and psychiatric treatment by telehealth?
Yeah, that's right. That's, yeah, we hear that all the time. And you, you know, telehealth is, is a good thing if, if it's there and, you know, if, if there's not, no other option. But obviously it's not, it's not ideal and that nothing, nothing can replace that um, face-to-face treatment, especially when it comes to psychiatric, psychiatric services, I think.
Now, in your submission, Ms. Garman, you, you highlighted the need for improved cancer services. Can you give me some examples and some of the feedback from your member, members about cancer services in rural and regional areas?
Yeah, absolutely. So it wasn't uncommon for us to hear stories of people having to travel hundreds of kilometres, you know, 400 kilometres um, to seek those, those services. Um, what that means is as, as Linda was saying, being away from family, you know, being away from your business. A lot of um, people in rural areas run their own business and they don't necessarily have someone to replace them. So that means, you know, if a member of the family is away, um, the other members of the family aren't necessarily going to be able to accompany them or I'll be with them, which I think COVID has highlighted for a lot of people how hard that is to be away from family to, when you, when you're undergoing treatments. So that's something that rural people do all the time, pre-COVID. Um, so yeah, we had, we had lots of stories from, from all sorts of areas. Um, and that was due to the lack of, you know, oncology services.
Absolutely. Now, are you familiar with the IPTAS, IPTAS programme?
Yes. The, yeah, we didn't, we didn't overly hear too much. We did ask for feedback about that in our survey, but we actually didn't hear too much, which makes me think it's, you know, maybe not so widely taken up or I'm not sure what, what the committee's heard during the process.
Ms. McLean, would you like to add something about that? You nodded during that.
Yes, um, with IPTAS, people do take it up, but it's sometimes not offered. Um, it's just, the patient has to ask themselves for IPTAS access. It's not an automatic system that happens.
Now, you, you're familiar with the, the way. Now, you, you're familiar with the, the way the committee process works, that we make recommendations to the government. Now, would you feel that there could be recommendations involving publicising or increasing or improving the IPTAS programme?
Definitely, yes.
Definitely. Now.
One thing that we did hear, sorry.
Yes, yes.
One thing we did hear was that the costs weren't anywhere near, you know, the out-of-pocket amount experienced by people. So perhaps that could be part of the recommendation, it's actual realistic costs.
Thank you, thank you. That's great. Now.
We've just gone, can we circle back if we can? Is that on a, what's it called?
Yeah, yeah, um, yes, yes, okay.
Thank, thank you very much. Can we proceed now to the Deputy Chair, Honorable Emma Hurst?
Thank you so much, Chair. I wanted to start just with a couple of questions to Mrs. McLean in regards to some, some things in your submission. You noted that in twenty fifteen, you lost the services of both the visiting women's health nurse and the monthly visit of the Royal Flying Doctor Service. Why did these services cease and what has that meant for the community?
My understanding of the Women's Flying Doctor Service was ceased due to funding. During a period of change of doctors as well, one doctor was leaving, another doctor was coming in. And for the community, it does, it upsets the community, it upsets the women with the Flying Doctor Service being ceased, because they, they would normally have a regular every five-week appointment that could be made available, and that's just not happening at the moment.
Has the government made any effort to reintroduce or make up for that loss of services?
I, I can't, can't tell you that. I don't know.
Okay, that's all right. You've also, and in some of your answers to my colleague Walt Secord, you talked about the travelling distance of a hundred and ten kilometres to the centre in Griffiths, and, and that's the same as well for, for women who are giving birth, for example. We've, we've heard people, you know, horror stories of, of, of women giving birth on the side of the roads. Is that a genuine fear for the, for the women in your community who are pregnant?
Oh, definitely. For those who don't have transport themselves, it is a genuine fear. And when I say transport themselves, if they have to rely on somebody else to get them in, maybe like the ambulance or something like that, yes. And it has happened, genuinely happened. Women have had babies en route to Griffiths, yes.
And, and does that deter women from moving into the area to, to, to bring up their families there? Do you find that there's any feedback that people are not wanting to move to rural areas because of that fear?
Um, I haven't personally heard of that fear, but that doesn't mean to say that members of the branch haven't, so.
Thank you. Just moving on to Mrs. Garmine, in your submission, you mentioned a, a unit of negative blood would be available, should be available to all country hospitals at all times. I mean, this seems like a very basic request. Is this something that, that's not currently happening? Can you, can you sort of give us a bit more detail about that?
Yeah, sure. So this is something that we've actually been advocating for, for quite some time. And the response that we, you know, there are, there are logistical issues in terms of how long the blood can actually be stored for. So it really is a, a very difficult task. But we continue to, yeah, to seek that, that minimum requirement for all country hospitals.
So that's something you've been asking for, for a long time, and it's still not in place?
Not as yet.
And, and another recommendation was that every tertiary hospital, referral hospital in New South Wales should provide onsite or nearby accommodation that is affordable, and also wheelchair accessible. Is that one of the, one of the big challenges that you're experiencing? Can you sort of talk a little bit more about this and what needs to actually be put in place in that recommendation?
Yeah, absolutely. So I guess it is for people that are visiting and being able to have their family come and stay whilst seeking treatment. You know, that's often not, not available, not the case. There are some really good programmes out there. But, yeah, we're just seeking that more funding for those sorts of programmes more broadly.
Thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you very much, Deputy Chair. Kate Ferman.
Chair. Thank you both for appearing. I just wanted to expand just a little bit on the questioning by Mr. Walt Secord in relation to mental health services. And obviously, often before the bed situation, there is the access to psychiatrists and psychologists. So, Mrs. McLean, I might ask you first, what's the access like and the cost, I suppose, the availability and the cost for people who are seeking access to psychiatrists in particular?
Seeking access to psychiatrists who at the moment need to go to Griffiths. There is a mental health unit there on Yambel Street, and their psychiatrist is fly-in, fly-out, and it takes every two weeks. And I, I guess that's through the, the health system, so you probably wouldn't have the, the cost associated with that. But if you have to go privately, then you, the cost is, I don't know the exact cost of the fee today, but people have paid up to seven hundred dollars to have access to online services for a psychiatrist. And the mental health unit in Griffith tells you that if it's just for, and you want to access a psychiatrist, if you haven't been referred or you're not having acute situation, you won't get access to that fly-in, fly-out psychiatrist, you'd probably have to go privately, but that's for a service.
Wow, that's extraordinary. So, and this is a situation where mental health issues are quite significant in, in the district. Is that, that correct? So I assume there's, it sounds like there's unmet demand. People wouldn't be able to afford it for a start.
Well, that's right. You know, if you're paying, having to pay significant sums to, to go and see a psychiatrist, that obviously, you know, the patient's got to be willing and able to, to have someone get them there, and then they've got to pay the fee as well. And I suppose with the online, they, they could be doing it at, from home and not having to travel anywhere. But it's just the, the availability of the, there was a surgery in Griffith that had a fly-in, fly-out psychiatrist coming through, and that was, you could access Medicare for that, but that no longer, to my knowledge, is available.
Ms. Garmine, do you have anything to say or add to that question? We had this sort of story replicated basically around the state. I do have a statistic, I can bring it up while we move on, if you like, about the percentage of our respondents that were able to access psychiatrists services. So I'll, okay, I'll just quickly bring that up while we continue.
Okay, all right, great. I, I did want to move on then to the, basically the availability of alcohol and other drugs, treatment and, and services. So what's the, what's the gaps, I suppose, and I'm assuming there are quite a few, particularly in relation to treatment services and rehab facilities in the district. Mrs. McLean, we'll go to you again first.
With the mental health unit, there is the drug and alcohol unit attached to that. I can't tell you too much about that. But, yeah, there is the drug and alcohol available in town. But coming to, to, for Hilton, they they do outreach, but it's more of an on-demand service. It's not something that's regularly made available, so.
Okay, Ms. Garmine. Yes, so forty-seven percent of our respondents had access to psychiatry services. So we define that as within their local government area or, or within a hundred kilometres from their home. And in terms of alcohol and other drug treatment services and support services, thirty-nine percent of our respondents could access those within their local government area or within a hundred kilometres from home.
So can I, that's, so can I check with your survey, which was excellent, that you undertook that in consultation for this inquiry? It's incredibly useful. So was the question, was the question around the women participating in the survey? Or was it for them and their families and partners as well?
So it was open to anyone that lived in rural, regional or remote New South Wales. We didn't limit it to just our members. But obviously, because we distribute it through our channels, you know, obviously, it was, the respondents were largely our members. But it was open to, to everyone in regional areas, and we had over eight hundred and fifty responses.
Okay, thank you. And so one of the, one of the other issues that we have heard about in the last couple of days, particularly, is the provision of or the lack of services really in terms of oncology services and the huge reliance that cancer patients have on volunteer organisations such as Cancer Council and CAN Assist. Do you see that within your members as well? I don't know if the CWA also provides assistance in that regard in terms of helping for, for your members when it comes to accessing health services. Would you like to talk about the, the essential role that volunteer organisations play in sometimes filling the gaps for, for, filling the gaps that, that, that aren't being provided from the public and private health system? Ms. Garmine, we'll go to you first.
Sure, yes. So as I was saying in my opening statement, that was one of the founding reasons for the CWA stepping in where there, where there is a gap. So I'm sure there are branches around the state doing these sorts of activities. For example, I know some of our halls have been used for hearing clinics or vaccination clinics recently as well. So the CWA, you know, continues to do that sort of thing. In terms of the question about oncology, I just thought I'd raise as well, we had forty percent of people from our survey responses that could access oncology services. So that's quite a fair portion, I think, representing people that, that simply can't access that type of service or treatment or in any way. So that's at least driving an hour just for that. So I thought that was interesting.
Well, also, because with cancer, it's not like, well, I suppose most of the health services we're talking about really aren't optional. But with cancer, it's, you know, starkly not really an option as to whether or not you can access a service. But we heard yesterday that in fact, some people like are refusing or having to forego treatment, having to make the tough decision to not go to treatment because of cost, because of distance, and it would just overall, they just can't do it because of those two things. Are you hearing those stories as well?
Absolutely. It, it's just too hard. It's, it's, it's too hard for people and they just shouldn't have to make this choice. Yeah, we hear that all the time.
Thank you very much, Kate. So I'll move now to government members. The other one, Karen Jones, will you take lead? Is that yours?
Yes, thank you, Chair. First of all, can I also extend my congratulations to all the work that the CWA do, particularly coming up to your one hundred years. It is amazing, and we have heard this morning and Kate referred to it previously about the role that volunteer organisations play, particularly at the moment, and the challenges that you're having in keeping membership. And so I just want to say, well done with all the work that you have done. My first question just is around training and development, particularly for recruiting of doctors and nurses and allied health professionals to rural and regional areas. And in your submission, Ms. Garman, you mentioned about a fit-for-purpose training, and I would wanted you to elaborate on what needs to be done to whether it's changed the, so the training that is provided to our young professionals, or what needs to be looked at to, to encourage and, and ensure that they are retained in rural and regional areas?
Yeah, so I think there's a lot of different things that we could look at here. One of the examples that the members of the CWA put forward in the past is more of the rural-based scholarships for medical training. You know, even down to, we had a discussion, I think, two years ago at our state conference about training aged care nurses, having to pay for their own training expenses while they were on their, on their practice rounds. So one of our solutions was that, you know, at least they should have their expenses provided for during training, you know, those sorts of things. You know, everything needs to be looked at. Perhaps what you're referring to as well is that tailor-made approach often in the country, in all, all, all professions, not just health, you might have someone quite junior out there, maybe on their own. So it's really important that these people are supported with, you know, the learning opportunities that they would have in the city out in the regional areas as well.
And in relation to nurse practitioners, it's, it's come up in previous hearings about the importance of nurse practitioners and also the desire for more of them. As, do you have any comments or any feedback from your members about the work of nurse practitioners and whether or not there's particular areas they'd like to see more nurse practitioners recruited for?
Yes, so across the board, I think our members tell us that there's often just not enough nurses to even provide, you know, a safe level of care. They're often young, as I was talking about, maybe they're on their own. There's been a lot of discussion recently about violence towards healthcare workers. So it's just not, you, you know, if, if the environment's not safe and secure and supportive, we're not unfortunately going to attract any, anymore. So, yeah, I would just reiterate that all of those things need to be looked at, and we're one of our, our biggest and strongest calls is just for more, more nurses, enrolled nurses and registered nurses in regional areas.
My final question before I move on is just in relation to one of the statements you've made in your submission about the review of disparity between, of the prices charged across health professionals. Could you give some examples of that and what are your suggestions in relation to it? And I'm mindful that a lot of healthcare and funding does cross over state and federal boundaries, but this report, or this inquiry is looking at health in general. So it's, even though it could be federal issues, it's good to, to get some of those things on the record.
Yeah, so what we heard from our members was just the disparity. So often it was, you know, maybe unknown how much, you know, maybe a mammogram or a scan was going to cost, and, and it might cost one person a certain amount and another person a different amount. So I guess just the ambiguity, you know, all of the, the costs, not knowing how much something is going to be before, you know, undertaking that, the treatment, for example. And I think what we would like to see is a review of all of that, what, you know, what's covered under private healthcare. We heard a lot of our survey respondents wondering what are they paying for? I know this is out of the range of this inquiry, but it seems to be a big problem. People are paying money for private healthcare and not necessarily seeing, you know, any, any benefits to that. And, yeah, even the costs through the public system in terms of regional people, that was more about self-funded trips to bigger regional centres or, or the city to seek treatment and accommodation costs, time away from work, travel costs and, and that. So, yeah, that was definitely a strong part of what we were seeking to have addressed.
Thank you very much. And a question just following on from that to Mr. McLean in relation to your, your comments in your submission regarding pharmacist funding and the model of funding for that. Aware again, it's more federal, but I'm interested to hear what were the views of your members in relation to that?
I just wish that when a pharmacist is away or for professional development or, or leave or whatever time, that they have acts, not so much access, that there's funding available for that pharmacist to put another pharmacist on. I, I believe that at the moment, they have to, you know, do it privately. Yes, it is a private business and they should pay for their private costs. But there needs to be some sort of assistance there so that if they do need to take the time, that the town's not left for a lengthy period of time without a pharmacist or, or a doctor for that case.
Thank you. That's, I've no further questions.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, can we jump in for one question each?
Well, there is, yes.
One each?
Can I propose a question across the three groups? So commence with the Honorable Walt Secord.
Thank you. A question to Ms. McLean. In your submission, which I want to thank you for your submission, you say that a women's health nurse only visits every six months.
That's my understanding, yes.
What kind of pressure, what kind of difficulties would that? What kind of pressure, what kind of difficulties would that create in the community?
Well, it doesn't give choice for starters. Um, if the individual doesn't feel comfortable with the doctor on hand, um, then it's only, you know, every six months they're going to be able to have access to another doctor, another, and not, sorry, another nurse or health nurse. Um, it also puts pressure on if there is an issue that people have to leave town to, um, access other services elsewhere.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Uh, now to the crossbench, um, uh, the deputy chair, would you like to ask a question?
No, I'm all good. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate, would you like to jump in with one final one?
No, I'm good too. Sorry, I, I used it.
And what about you, Natasha? One final one?
I'm, I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay, listen, um, can I thank you both once again, uh, for, um, now I know the honourable secretary wants me to circle back to him, but I am not going to do that. So can I, uh, thank you both, uh, once again, um, for the contribution, both with respect to the time made to, um, obviously prepare and make the submissions and, and the time available today that you've provided. We know you're both, you're both very busy. And, uh, once again, can I just, uh, acknowledge and thank the CWA? It's a wonderful achievement. There's an itinerary coming up. Uh, it's, it's, it was very much interesting to me to hear those, um, comments in the opening statement about the, the basis published, the organisation was established in the first instance in terms around the issues that we've been discussing. So it's, it's very timely and the organisation is very well known for its, uh, tireless work and advocacy. And can I assure you that it's held in high regard by, uh, politicians of, of, of all colours in terms of the genuineness and the forthright which, in which it, um, prepares its, its, uh, views and presents them to politicians for their consideration. So thank you very, very much. Much appreciated.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, members.
Can we, uh, now move to the next, uh, group of witnesses? Um, uh, so we've got a transition now. So don't go away. Uh, we'll wait whilst the next, uh, uh, witnesses, uh, from the Yerba Della area and, uh, and Union Shoalhaven, uh, prepare themselves to give their evidence. But we will, we will proceed, um, with our next, uh, panel of, uh, witnesses. And we, uh, thank you all for making yourselves available today. Um, we need to deal with the formalities first in terms of preparing you to give evidence before the inquiry today. So, uh, what I'll do, uh, is I'll get each of you, uh, the three of you, uh, to state your name, uh, your position title in terms of who you're representing here today before the inquiry and, uh, swear either an oath or an affirmation, whichever you prefer, uh, the words of which should be, have been provided to you. But if for some reason you haven't got them, please let us know and we'll provide them to you. So, uh, can, um, we start, uh, with, uh, Dr. Holland?
Thank you, Dr. Michael Holland. Uh, I represent One, One New Yerba Della Hospital, uh, who have, uh, placed a submission before the committee. Um, I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Dr. Holland. Uh, could we move now to, uh, Ms. Hurst?
Um, hello, I'm Catherine Hurst. I'm a member of the, the One New Yerba Della Hospital group member. Um, I solemnly and sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hurst, and thank you for, uh, participating and joining us today. And, uh, can I now move to, uh, uh, Union Shoalhaven and, uh, Mrs. David?
Oh, good morning. Uh, my name's Patricia David and I'm the secretary of Union Shoalhaven. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. David, and a warm welcome to you as well. Um, can I, um, acknowledge, uh, the submissions, uh, made, uh, to the inquiry? Uh, the first one, submission number seventeen, uh, standing in the name of One, uh, One New Yerba Della Hospital. Uh, thank you for that. It's been received, processed and stands as a submission to the inquiry and has been uploaded to the inquiry's webpage. Uh, and equally, can I acknowledge, uh, the submission from Union Shoalhaven? And equally, uh, it, uh, it's been received. It's submission number two seven four, been processed uh, and, uh, uploaded onto the inquiry's webpage. So both of those stand as submissions and accordingly, um, evidence to this inquiry. So, uh, that's been very helpful for us. Uh, you can take those two submissions read by committee members. So they've all had the opportunity to read and study those submissions. So there's no need in your opening statements to, uh, in detail, go into the, uh, the content of the, uh, submissions per se, but rather perhaps scope out some broad issues that you'd like to put on the table. Um, of course, pointing to points in the submission if you wish. And that will lead then to, uh, an ability for the, uh, committee members to ask you a range of questions that you particularly like addressed to you. So, um, if we perhaps start with, um, uh, uh, One, One New Yerba Della Hospital. And I'm just wondering, uh, Dr. Holland, did, do you want to share an opening statement with, uh, Ms. Hurst? Or were you going to do one on behalf? How are we going to, um, proceed? What would you prefer?
Uh, I've, uh, given Cathy Hurst, uh, a copy of the opening statement, which she's endorsed. And she has her own, uh, prepared statement.
Okay.
Uh, so I can start representing both of us.
Please do, please do.
So, uh, I thank the committee for the opportunity to provide evidence in the inquiry. I represent a rural advocacy group who for the past three years have petitioned and continue to petition state and federal governments for improvement in local health services. Our group is also represented today by Cathy Hurst, who has personal experience of the deficiencies of rural healthcare access for local cancer patients. The submission was received by the New South Wales Parliament twelve months ago. I will not reiterate its content as there has been no objective improvement in regards to the issues submitted. And if anything, there's been a deterioration in the provision of safe maternity and neonatal care, which in an untimely manner has reached a crisis point in the month of this inquiry. Also, since the original submission, our community has been disappointed by the rejection of funding for local radiation oncology services specifically designated for our regions by pre-election promises from the federal Liberal Labor and National Parties. Uh, the Yerba Della has clinical and social needs that exceed our neighbouring regions with level four hospitals. This includes the largest number of vulnerable older population and indigenous residents. Emergency presentations are sixty-five percent greater and, and admissions are twenty-five percent greater than our neighbouring hospitals. And our maternity service has the largest number of births for a regional maternal, a rural maternity service in the LHD. Despite this, our community remains disadvantaged and will remain disadvantaged on the opening of the new regional hospital. The capital funding for the new regional hospital is inadequate and will result in reduced bed numbers, specifically in maternity, neonatal and paediatrics. The Department of Health maintains a policy of drip-feeding rural health services and prevaricates on the critical issue of opening the proposed Yerba Della Hospital with level four services. The current clinical service plan equivocates by the promise of delivery of certain services by twenty thirty-one, some ten years away. Our community expects immediate improvement in health services and equity of services in the New Yerba Della Hospital.
Thank you very much, uh, Dr. Holland. And can I pass now to, uh, Ms. Hurst? Would you like to add to or augment to the comments of, uh, Dr. Holland?
Um, no, Chair, I won't at this point. I, I think Michael, Dr. Holland has, um, addressed everything.
Thank you very much. Well, I'm sure, I'm sure there'll be some questions. So thank you for that. Um, can we move now to, uh, Mrs. David? Um, do you have an opening statement you would like to make?
I do. Thank you. Uh, good morning to, good morning to the portfolio committee and thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to this inquiry. The availability of health services is an important issue to many people. Union Shoalhaven engaged with the community to test their views on the subject of the proposed redevelopment of the Shoalhaven District Community, uh, Hospital. The majority thought the current Shoalhaven Hospital has outgrown the site and capacity. Responses for a Greenfield site were, one, the allocation and the impact this has on response times to get patients from their residence to hospital in an emergency situation. This impacts hugely on residents living in outlying villages and further south of Nara. At the moment, compliance to best practice fails. Two, a need for separation of general emergency admissions from mental health emergency and justice health admissions is a must for best practice outcomes. Three, a better pathway is based on best practice outcomes and acute mental health. Four, detox and rehab services. No detox centre in Shoalhaven. Five, inadequate stroke services. Six, MRI and lack of neurology services in the public hospital. Seven, a need for public orthopedic ward at the hospital. Eight, requires a specialised, updated cardiology department and updates to stress test services. Nine, shortages of medical and surgical beds. Only twenty-six surgical beds at the hospital. Ten, the highest waiting list for public surgery as recovery beds not available resulting in bed block. Eleven, a lack of GPs in the Shoalhaven is putting extra stress on our emergency department as well as lack of bulk building practices. Twelve, believe that a separation of the Illawarra and Shoalhaven to their own health districts is needed. Thirteen, need for a closer links to the university. Fourteen, traffic issues including timely access. And fifteen, the public didn't want the park planned adjacent to the Pibby Regime. They wanted that left to be left to the community. The main problem that concerned people who saw that the redevelopment of hospitals had been soft and was basically the need to get this done now. They didn't, they thought that a Greenfield site might impact on the time and delay it unjustifiably. The Shoalhaven LGA is a large area that spreads over a hundred and twenty-five kilometres. Population forecast for twenty twenty-one is a hundred and six thousand more, which trebles in holiday season. It is estimated to grow to a hundred and thirty-seven thousand and more by twenty fifty-one. Currently, a hospital number of beds is believed to be averaged round out to a hundred and seventy-five, of which twelve are only ICU. The intensive care unit is outdated and requires an upgrade. We are acutely aware of the need for a bigger hospital as SAP. On the current site is a multi-storey car park run by Wilson Car Park, is a cancer clinic and a GP clinic. Commencement date is not known, although it has been reported as commencing in March twenty twenty-three or sooner. If this redevelopment is not due to be completed for seven to eight years, it seems ridiculous to not even consider a Greenfield site further south. Especially when Shoalhaven, southern areas are placed at a distinct disadvantage in places like the Basin area, Sussex and Milton-Mallardaria Valley need to be included when planning service delivery infrastructure into the future. Milton-Mallardala Hospital is aging and poorly resourced and ED cannot cope with demand during career season. The maternity services only provide ongoing antenatal leading up to birth where they have to travel to Shoalhaven Hospital and postnatal care after. Definitely poor practice. Shoalhaven Hospital could continue to run uninterrupted while a new hospital is being built. And once completed, the old hospital site would remain fully functional with specialist care, extension on mental health care, drug alcohol centres and more. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Mrs. David. That was very detailed uh, and, uh, a very frank assessment of matters in the Shoalhaven. So thank you very much. Well, we'll proceed now to questions from, uh, committee members. Um, we have, uh, through to, um, eleven forty. So we'll divide the time between, uh, ourselves. So we'll commence with the opposition, the honourable secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Dr. Holland, Ms. Hurst and, and Mrs. David, thank you for your, your submissions. They present a picture that shows the south coast and far south coast have been neglected involving health with the state government. So I thank you for your frank assessments. Doctor, Dr. Holland, what is it like to be the only obstetrician in Yerba Della Shire?
Uh, it's a position that I, I've held for nineteen years. Uh, this, um, uh, virtual con- uh, com- uh, contact is probably unique that you're actually speaking, uh, to a dinosaur that will soon be extinct. Uh, healthcare will, um, not be provided by single practising, uh, specialists in any region without adequate, uh, backup from, uh, credentialed and, um, well-trained, um, GP proceduralists. It's made my job, uh, sustainable. Uh, however, um, many of you would not, um, understand or believe the hours that are put in, in each week of being, uh, on a routine week being ninety-six hours, uh, on call continuously and, uh, and, um, every, uh, one to two months being on call for two hundred and sixty-four hours continuously.
That is extraordinary. That is extraordinary. That is extraordinary. Um, so what happens? What happens if there are complications or difficulties involving small babies? And you're not around or you've worked two hundred and sixty-four hours?
Uh, thank you. The, there is a, a team of, uh, GP obstetricians who are the first on call. I provide second on call. So any complicated, uh, maternity case I will attend. That includes every cesarean or, um, instrumental vaginal birth. Also, if there are any maternal complications. Uh, for many years, it's a perennial problem that we have fought to get, uh, neonatal resuscitation services that are provided by a single practitioner in a situation where you don't ring one person and be referred to another person or referred to the other. This is, this is where the, yes?
Sorry, Dr. Holland, continue.
This is where the crisis has arisen recently, that, uh, over a period of time, um, well-trained GP VMOs are no longer present on a VMO roster to cover these issues. And, uh, and these issues, uh, these positions are regularly held by locum, uh, VMOs who may be general practitioners with various degrees of skill in neonatal care. Or they may be a physician who is a, a practising, uh, geriatrician or endocrinologist filling time in, in the area.
Doctor, Dr. Holland, let's cut to the chase here. Is this unsafe?
Yes, it is unsafe. In the past two weeks, there've been over twenty births. Um, five babies have needed, uh, resuscitation or neonatal support during that time. And two of those babies have needed to be transferred outside our area.
Now, ne- neonatal support, needle, neonatal resuscitation, what does that mean?
Neonatal resuscitation may be a baby that's born unexpectedly with a very low heart br- heart rate or not, not breathing. So it's the equivalent in many situations of CPR as you would do in an adult. Now, there, that's a critical and life-threatening situation. And basically, all people who are involved in dealing with childbirth should be trained to deal with that. That includes the obstetricians and the midwives present. However, uh, a midwife or a doctor or an obstetrician who are involved in the care of the mother cannot then be expected to take over the care of a critically ill newborn. It extends further to babies that deteriorate some hours after birth where you need, um, uh, again, someone experienced in the, uh, newborn or paediatric care to, uh, to continue to care for those babies that may be sick for other reasons.
Now, you have similar concerns about oncology cancer treatment too, don't, don't you, in the region?
Well, I, I don't want to preempt Cathy on, on this issue and who has her personal experience of this. Uh, the, the problems that we share in, in oncology services in the Yerba Della are shared by, um, uh, most, uh, rural and regional areas in that when you, when you consider that, um, probably fifty percent of, uh, oncology or cancer cases could benefit from, uh, radiation on. Probably fifty percent of uh oncology or cancer cases could benefit from uh radiation oncology. But only a third of of people uh take up radiation oncology services. Now, in rural areas. That primarily occurs because of uh the inability to access services locally. And in the situation in the Euro Badala is either to travel uh three hours to Canberra. Or three hours to Nara or four and a half hours to Sydney.
That is extraordinary. Um, Dr, Dr Holland, would you mind if I asked Ms, Ms Hurst? Could you please give us a personal perspective on your cancer and your radiation journey?
Um I'd like to thank the committee for this opportunity, um because you've probably heard lots of personal experiences from other people who've suffered. Uh with terrible things as well. So I um I got diagnosed in March this year of having anal cancer. And um I uh was given the opportunity to choose between Canberra or Sydney. And that was a bit of a dilemma. Whilst Canberra is closer. Where was I going to stay and who was I going to burden with my staying there for up to six weeks? Um and Sydney, uh I was told had a very good multidisciplinary team, which is uh the new way of. Working with cancer has better outcomes, so I'm led to believe. Um so in the end, I chose to go to Sydney and um I thought. That was um better for me because I could stay with my children and still do things because. There's a sense of helplessness if you're just sitting around um sort of full of self pity. Um so I went to Sydney and I attended the, I had a choice of private or public. And I ended up going with Genesis Care because they were able to um. Facilitate times when I could go and and things that work best for me, which obviously in a public health system you can't. Necessarily do because of the burden it's placed on them with all the other patients. I um. Found that uh out through friends and not through the medical um. Unity that there was actually a thing called um uh. The patient travel and accommodation assistance scheme. And that allowed me to actually stay in Sydney on the weekdays and come home on weekends, which was marvelous. Um and should be publicised more, I think. Um it doesn't cover all the costs, but it it covered some of them. I was also fortunate that my husband is self-sufficient and could look after our animals and our small um business, which is Airbnb. Um and we, and so the process began. Whilst I was uh didn't have as many side effects as a lot of other people I have, I. Towards the end of the treatment, it became really, really difficult doing this travel. Travelling meant that I um. Had to be prepared whether I was going to vomit, complain, have diarrhoea attacks or anything, which is highly embarrassing. Um and concerning, you get shaky and things just thinking about. Can you get on that bus for that long or or the train or whatever it was you were taking? So um. The difference between that and actually having a hospital or facility in your region where, you know, drive yourself. Have your fifteen minutes radiation treatment and come home. Um. It would make all the difference to people. And, you know, as I said, I was fortunate. But if you're a young, single person, um had no support, you had young children, what would you do? How would you survive? How, how do you have? You know, get money to uh if you're not working. There's all these sort of other problems for. A whole lot of people in regional areas that aren't necessarily an issue in the cities.
Uh doc, thank, thank you, Ms Hurst. Dr Holland, so what excuses or reasons? Are these, is the state government giving for not providing um oncology uh radiation services in Euro Badala?
Uh there, a tender was put in by private um radiation oncology providers. Uh to provide bulk bill services uh for radiation oncology. Using the proposed uh money promised by the federal government in two thousand and nineteen. Uh the response was the population uh base was inadequate to support. Uh a radiation oncology services uh with an estimate of a need of population of four hundred thousand. Uh to to provide these services. This is in contradiction to the providers who do provide. Uh services to equivalent or smaller populations uh across Australia, including Mount Gambier. Uh Geraldton and Gladstone in other states. Uh ultimately, just, yes, Mr Walt Seco.
Yes, so.
I'll need to move.
I'll be very quick, I'll be very quick. So you're saying that there was a private provider willing to provide bulk billing services. But it wasn't followed up by the state government.
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Thank you, Dr Holland.
Thank you. We may return to that, uh but moving over to uh the deputy chair, honourable Emma Hurst.
Uh thank you, Chair. And um I just want to say thank you as well uh to Ms Hurst for for sharing her story and and I know it's. Difficult to come here amongst a whole group of people that you don't know and to share those details. So thank you very much. It's really useful for us as a committee. To actually understand what happens to people on the ground. I want to ask um a question to Mrs David. Um. My understanding and and having read through your submission was that, you know, there's a really strong community support for moving the Shalhaven Hospital. To to a location. Um can you give us a better understanding about this? And and whether there was pushback about moving that location or um if that's been accepted or if not, why not?
Um well, we, we started camp planning on this issue when it was first raised. Um. Uh we went out in the community, we spoke to a lot of people, we attended the forums and everything like that and listened to what. The concerns were and most of the people, and I would say. Close to eighty five, ninety percent of the people that we spoke to. Agreed that a Greenfield site would be a better option for the Shalhaven based on the proximity of hospital. Um which they're saying is only going to be redeveloped. Now, we do understand that the. Location of the current hospital has got the cancer clinic there plus a um a GP clinic. But we just think that um this hospital can be built better up. As a new hospital in a bigger location, a little bit further down south to give it a better access for people in the. Uh southern um villages and towns of the Shalhaven going all the way down to Milton-Malladura. And this gives them the better response time to get to pro- a hospital in emergency situations. Um people have identified a Greenfield site um near the Falls Creek area because of access to the main highway. And everything like that. Now, we understand people's concerns also that. If the redevelopment doesn't go ahead and there's a Greenfield site, that they feel that this is going to impact on the timeline. To get a upgrade of this hospital that's very much needed. So uh while we support their fears and concerns. We also support the majority of people who want the Greenfield site. We can see it working uh two ways. Uh while the uh current, if the new Greenfield site goes ahead, you've got the ability. But no disruption at the old site while this is being um while this is being developed. If it's going to take seven or eight years or something to the final completion of this um project, then why its insistence? On just a redevelopment, um other than we need it now. I mean, if it's not going to be finished in the seven to eight years, then. People are concerned that it's not the right viable option for a community that's largely expanding. Um access in the southern suburbs need to be considered most definitely. So that's our main concern, yeah.
Uh you, you mentioned um time to, uh uh the amount of time to actually get to the hospital. Um with the current location and compared to the proposed location. Um you know, what is, what are the time differences that some people are looking at?
Well, if you live in, let's say, um Milton-Malladura area of the south coast, that's an hour's drive. To Shalhaven Hospital, um depending on traffic. If you're delayed in any reason, it can be a lot longer. And if uh if it's during the peak holiday seasons. You could be stuck for two hours and more. Now, yes, you have the ambulances that are responding from those areas. But they still have that hour to get up there. So and that's in a good flow of traffic and everything like that. And then you've got the outlying villages that don't have a ambulance or anything like that, you know, they're relying them to come from. Vincenti or St George's Basin or something like that. So that impact can be quite huge. And if you're having a heart attack or a stroke or something like that, we all know the, the, how, how important it is. For the reaction time to get people to their emergency care in a best practice time. Those figures aren't created. Um willy-nilly, they're, they're, they're best practice figures and they need to be adhered to most definitely. So that's, that's. One of the main concerns that people have when you're living in such a vast LGA like the Shalhaven is the response times. Um for emergency situations, yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for that. Uh, uh, Dr Holland, we've heard a lot in this inquiry. Um about the difficulty of attracting staff to regional rural and remote areas. Um do you have concerns going forward about um making sure that that any new hospital, when it's eventually built? Um will be fully staffed and 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 will be staffed on like when it's open and ready to go?
Uh thank you for the question. Yes, I do. Uh in my personal experience, my contract with the LHD. Ends in twenty one months. Uh every time my contract has been renewed, I've reminded them. Of the need of succession planning and recruitment. Specialists don't grow or fall out of trees. They need a succession plan to in, uh to attract them to new hospitals. And with most, most professions. Uh most professionals are not attracted by money. You wouldn't come to the country if you wanted to make money. They're attracted by. The overall terms and conditions and professional satisfaction of the uh work that you do. And I must say that, and you've probably heard before, that most uh rural and regional doctors. Find more satisfaction in their care than metropolitan doctors. But you can't attract people with inadequate bed numbers. Inadequate staffing from uh specialised nurses and midwives and allied health. So if you build a hospital that's fifty percent smaller than it should be. And you don't start recruiting people years before uh the doors open at that hospital, you'll open it uh as a dysfunctional hospital.
And in your submission, you also talk about innovative contractual arrangements necessary to attract general. Uh practitioners and specialist VMOs. Um what, what, what are you um? You know, what are you envis- envisaging in regards to an innovative contractual arrangement? What does that involve?
Well, traditionally, uh doctors would be uh employed as uh visiting medical officers. Either on a sessional or fee-for-service base basis or um. Or they may be employed as staff specialists. Uh I think uh in many areas. You need to have different contractual arrangements where uh people are paid not by. How much work they do, but how often they're on call. Uh their work needs to be uh. My own position particularly is made sustainable by the su- support of uh GP proceduralists. And in rural areas. Um you can have one or two specialists who can be on call uh every one or two nights as long as they have. Uh adequate GP proceduralist backup. And that applies for obstetrics, it applies for paediatrics, it applies for mental health. And applies for general uh general medicine.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Deputy Chair. Kate Fermin.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you all for appearing today. Um I might start with you, Dr Holland. Your submission, your submission makes the point of the fact that. The government has said, and I think you've mentioned it in your opening statement. That the Euro Badala Health Services Clinical Services Plan. Won't be kind of ready, if you like, in terms of its development until twenty thirty one. That's what the government has said. Is that correct? Who, or the LHD? Where has that come from?
There, there are various uh manifestations of of the clinical services plan. I was the VMO representative on the design of the clinical services plan. And the clinical services plan twenty nineteen. Does not reflect the clinical services plan twenty twenty, which was signed off by our chief executive. In fact, there's been a progressive reduction in the number of general beds, emergency beds. Maternity beds have been reduced from seven beds to three beds. Uh pediatric and neonatal beds have been reduced. Uh and the, the Minister for Health has equivocally said. That work on this new hospital will start within the term of the present government. Well, that could be sometime before March twenty twenty three, and he'd still be telling the truth. And the clinical services plan describes a long-term plan to provide services up to twenty thirty one. So in other words, you could open that hospital, which the community expects to have level four services, and level four services. Imply that you have an intensive care service. According to role delineations of clinical services. No other service comes up to level four or level three without a level four intensive care service. So you may open the doors, but they're not committed to fulfilling the full level four service until. The end of twenty thirty one. We may be lucky, it may happen before, but I'm sure it won't without community pressure on them.
Thank you. I'm just, kind of, we've been reflecting, I think, in this committee a bit about the, the various promises. For um a fantastic health service, if you like, over the last, say, ten or more years. There's the New South Wales Government State Health Plan towards twenty twenty one. Of course, it's now twenty twenty one. And at the time this was written, it, well, it said, the foreword from the then Minister Gillian Skinner. Says that in twenty eleven, the New South Wales Government began a process of change. To build a twenty-first century healthcare system to really deliver on our promise of right care, right place, right time. So it's twenty twenty one. I might get your opinions on whether the. New South Wales Government has actually achieved that right place, right place, uh right time, uh promise. Dr Holland?
From, from my perspective, if you look at the population size of the Euro Badala. Uh the size of our older uh residents, the number of older residents, the size of our indigenous community. Of which a, a large proportion are in the younger age group and make up ten percent of our maternity uh service. And if you look at the fact that the number of um. Uh births in the Euro Badala is the largest in the rural um uh segment of the LHD. Uh why are we waiting in twenty twenty one to get a level four service that includes adequate. Uh maternity services, adequate neonatal services. We have children waiting twelve to eighteen months. For a routine pediatric consultation and we have no pediatricians. So. Uh I, I think this is a problem that's shared across the whole south coast. It's not a Euro Badala versus Beeger issue. Uh Medicare provides, should provide uh medical services in an equitable manner and an accessible manner. And these services should be provided across the whole far south coast of New South Wales. Uh for equity, and that includes uh the need for pediatric services and it includes the need for radiation oncology services. Which will benefit people from the Victorian border up to Milton-Malladura.
Yeah, I'll go to the other two witnesses in a second just to answer that, but considering we have had this, this health plan that said back in twenty eleven. That we would have right care, right place, right time by twenty twenty one. Now you're faced with another plan with promises for something in another ten years' time. It's, I could understand, Dr Holland, it would be quite difficult for you to believe that the, about this promise and why, why isn't it done now? They've had so long to do it.
Well, there, there's some frustration on uh the process of delivery of healthcare on the south coast. Uh and without making it sound like um Beeger envy, uh the building of that health service was not. In the right place at the right time. Uh when you simply look at the fact that uh. Our, our emergency presentations are some over sixty percent higher than uh than Beeger, our admission rates. some over sixty percent higher than uh than Beeger, our admission rates are twenty five percent higher. So um without being cynical, there was a a uh a win-win situation for both sides of of politics on a federal and state level with the decision to make a build southeast regional hospital. Uh. That was partly compounded by the divisions in our community uh about trying to build a single uh uniform hospital. And to be fair, I've been here nineteen years, nine years of which uh has been under a Labor state government and ten years has been under a liberal state government. So uh I believe there should have been action well before now.
Thank you. Ms. Hurst, would you care to comment about the right care, right place, right time promise? Is that was that the situation for you?
Um. I've just, well, five years ago, I returned from Papua New Guinea and came back to Canberra. It was too cold and moved down the coast. And hadn't given any thought to things like healthcare. I just knew I didn't want to be cold anymore. Um. But coming down here, I realized um with my situation how lacking uh the services are down here. Uh. Things like um having uh diagnosis, uh PET scan diagnosis, I had to go to Nauru. I I always tend to have to go somewhere for the treatment. So from my perspective, it certainly hasn't got services at the right place at the right time. But I can't talk about the history because I wasn't here at the time.
Thank you, Ms. David.
Um. I think um if we look at it in the respect of what has occurred within Shoalhaven Hospital in that ten-year period, um they got a bloody good uh multi-story car park. Uh. There was a upgrade to the E and D, I believe, and um there was a cancer clinic um built for it. Um. But the overall um expansion regards to surgical beds um and all that type of thing, the clinical services and that have been woefully uh left behind. In fact, uh people had to travel to Wollongong to get any uh broken limbs set. And it's only just been recently that it started to, I believe, open up a um award that will deal with that type of thing. Uh. I haven't actually seen how it's running as yet or anything. I did notice they made an announcement in the last week or so about stroke services uh coming online, but whether that's actually occurring at this moment in the in the current hospital, I'm I'm not too sure of. But yes, we've been, we've all been, and then when you read all the submissions that come through on this inquiry, whole regional rural remote areas are woefully lacking in support and the care that they need to provide to the communities, and it shouldn't be happening. And the other thing is um with the lack of um in some of our regional areas of GPs, even in everything like that, the stress that this is putting on our emergency departments to uh take um the excess load because some of these clinics don't, GPs don't work the weekends and public holidays and all that type of thing. And in um peak holiday periods, this was just a huge impact. And it's um, it's something that um needs to really be looked at in regards to all regional, remote and rural areas. We can't, we're just not hoping it's under community stress all the time, not just for uh the population, but for the nursing staff and doctors and everything within our hospitals, and it shouldn't be.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Kate. Uh. We'll move now to the government questions. Um. Uh. The honourable Wes Feng, were you going to kick off? Or the honourable Natasha McLaren Jones?
Uh. Thank you, Chair. Um. I'm happy to kick off. Um. And uh obviously, I've, the honourable Natasha McLaren Jones returns, and we can um, we can look to uh um see if she's got some questions as well. Um. Now, apologies, um I wasn't here when you you started giving your um evidence, so um please um let me know if uh some of what I'm about to ask has been covered already. But I just wanted to start with um the the hospital uh situation itself. Obviously, um we've spoken about uh the uh Beeger uh situation with uh their hospital. Um. And with uh the provision of services into the future, has there been um coordination between um the LHD and uh the the areas um with regard to um duplications, provisions, and how the services are going to be um integrated with the community? And I'll start, if I could, with uh Mr. Holland, uh Dr. Holland.
Uh. Thank you, Mr. Feng. Uh. There is, the the design of the Clinical Services Plan is to basically uh provide the proposed services across all clinical streams uh going into the new hospital. Uh. Now, every hospital should basically have the provision for care for uh the older population, for women having babies, uh for women's health generally, uh which is restricted on the south coast, the number of options that are available, for for children, our most vulnerable. Uh. Medicine and surgery, that's what we call, that's what we get our degree in, so that's a no-brainer. Uh. Our concern is rationalization of medical services where a uh hub and spoke model is developed to say, well, it is good enough for a rural population to travel one and a half or two hours to have your hip replacement done, even though there might be more hips and knees in the population that you live in. So uh we are awaiting a coastal network plan to be developed by the um uh southern New South Wales Local Health District. Uh. We are concerned it will follow, our our group is concerned that it will follow the same pattern as adult mental health services, where um our residents with mental health issues will simply be transferred to industrial-sized uh inpatient services rather than having their care closer closer to home.
But uh at this stage, there has been no um uh, there's been no uh engagement or um uh confirmation that there will be division of services between the hospitals? Have you, do you have a, do you have any indication that that's what's being um discussed?
Uh. That I can tell you on the basis of women's health services, there's been no discussion of how women's health services will be provided uh following my, the end of my contract in twenty one months' time. Uh. There is no uh design for uh uh hospital-based outpatient services for women. Uh. A model of care needs to be developed uh to provide these services, which are currently provided from Milton-Allardal down to Eden. Uh. The the number of theatre spaces have been reduced, and as far as I'm aware, there is no uh plan for recruitment of orthopedic surgeons uh to do major orthopedic surgery in the region, which they can't do without level four intensive care services because of the need of post-operative uh care. And these these deficiencies go across all clinical streams. You can't recruit a pediatrician if the Clinical Services Plan says you're only going to have two pediatric beds, because what pediatrician would come under those conditions?
Well, I mean, I could imagine that you would have a potentially a private uh pediatrician uh who services the town uh doing private pediatrics and then would operate in a VMO um arrangement. Would that not be something that that would be suitable? If there were even with two pediatric beds, that would be um, you know, potentially with two pediatricians or one-on-two or roster would be, I would think, um something that 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 would be an attractive uh position and lifestyle for somebody, uh particularly the beautiful part of the world that you live in.
Well, it is a beautiful world, uh part of the world that we live in. But uh, you know, you you can feel like you're living in a beautiful jail if you're on call twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week and can't go anywhere. So those things don't attract people in terms of the quality of life. If you're on call, you can't have a surf, you can't go up to Canberra and watch the Brumbies or the Lorretas play. So you're restricted to uh a twenty-minute cir- circle around your area. Now, currently, there is no private or public pediatrician in the Euro Badala. Our children have to go for admission to Beeger, Canberra, or Nauru or Sydney. Uh. They are waiting twelve to eighteen months for appointment.
Yeah. I was just going to say that I'm I'm actually acutely aware of um, I I um have experience with uh people in pediatrics um in particular, so um uh, you know, and and the the difficulties of on-call rosters, which is why I actually said um if you had two of them and you had a one-in-two roster, um it would potentially allow you to have, you know, the the pediatricians in the town, and also with two beds, um you'd still be able to provide that service. Is that, is that the sort of thing which has been discussed around um, you know, making making the provision of services within the town for um day-to-day pediatrics, but then having those people potentially on a one-in-two on-call roster um for the hospital, has that been uh discussed, looked at, um engaged uh through engagement with um the the clinicians?
There is a uh adult, a director of clinical services uh in pediatrics who is linked with the uh southeast regional hostel, hospital pediatric service. Uh. That director agrees that uh two pediatric beds will not sustain a pediatric service. You won't attract uh clinical nurse specialists in pediatrics to staff two beds. Uh. You won't have the professional satisfaction for any uh specialist to cover two beds. And the issue of having two people is two people on call becomes one person on call when one person gets sick or goes on holidays. So the minimum sustainable level and the and the and what should be the minimal sustainable level of on-call in any specialty safely is no more than one in three on-call. Now, you can achieve that with two specialist uh pediatricians or obstetricians and back up with a GP uh proceduralist with special skills in either pediatrics or or obstetrics.
Hmm. But haven't you really hit the the nail on the head, I guess, uh with sort of the issues that 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 um arise for uh professionals uh such as specialists in in uh medical fields where they um may move to somewhere and provide not only a uh a a private service uh by day, but also be, you know, on-call, whether it be a one-in-two, one-in-three. Um. But they're not able to actually sustain the skills with which uh they they have, whether it be through their training, um uh through one of the the children's hospitals um where they might get ICU time um at tubing, and that they're they're not able to actually sustain that that level of skill. But uh, given the 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 patient load uh and the the lack of variety, unable to maintain those skills, can you see that that is potentially part of the problem when you have a one-in-three or a one-in-four uh in a smaller community? It is a dilution of the of the number of patients that that you see.
Well, let let me speak to private practice in the first place. Private practice in rural areas is a false economy. I'm sitting in my rooms. Yes?
Oh, sorry, I I my screens are frozen. I'm sorry. I don't know if I'm, my um um.
Please, please proceed, Dr. Holland.
Uh. Private practice in rural areas is a false economy. I'm providing a service here in my own uh funded private practice, which patients have to pay for, and uh simply is uh the fact that these services are not provided through outpatient clinics in in uh uh rural and regional hospitals. So uh it's a diversion of the cost to the patient. And often the argument is, well, you just you charge the patients as much as you like because they'd have to spend a day traveling somewhere else to see another specialist. Well, most specialists in rural areas have some moral and ethical objection to that principle. So uh you don't come to these areas to make lots of money. You can come to regional areas to have very rewarding uh and broad clinical uh experience uh as long as you have adequate training before you come here. Uh. The other alternative is to see see every tumor uh or um gynecological condition, and then once again say, well, this needs to be treated in a metropolitan area. So my own college has not really taken up uh the baton on this issue of well-trained uh procedural uh obstetricians and gynecologists that can uh basically perform most forms of surgery and services in rural in rural areas. And you need an adequate hospital with adequate beds and adequate uh service capability definitions to provide those.
Understood. Um. I'm just going to ask if any of my colleagues um wanted to jump in with any questions or um.
The honourable Natasha McLaren Jones or the honourable uh whoever.
Trevor.
Trevor, sorry, of course. Did you want to uh?
Mr. Chair.
Now, just hold it while, please.
Uh. No, 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 I'm I'm okay. I'm having, as Sam was, I'm having connection problems, so I'm missing quite a bit of this.
Do apologize for this. I can't. Well, Wes, did you want to uh ask a final question to round things out?
Oh, um, yeah, Chair, how much time do I have left? I'm just um, I wasn't sure if I was cutting people off.
Well, pretty pretty much, you've had all your time, but I mean, there has been a little bit of disruptions. I'm having to give you another another question.
Oh, Chair, look, I I I put any other questions I've got on notice, but thank you. And apologies for the technological issues. I um, yeah, my, I've got, my screens keep freezing, so.
Okay, okay. Wait, that's that's expected knowledge. We we don't hold you responsible for that, so thank you. Well, can I uh uh conclude now by uh thanking our witnesses?
Thank you.
Um. Dr. Holland, uh Ms. Hurst, uh and uh Mrs. David. Uh. Particularly, Doctor, thank you for um some deep and rich insights into matters health. Uh. You obviously bring much experience and insight, which has been very helpful to the committee. Uh. And we appreciate that. Um. Ms. Hurst, uh thank you particularly. Uh. It's it's not easy bearing one's soul, so to speak, um uh in public like this. Um. But it has provided us with a a very specific case study around which there's detail, which I'm sure will help inform our deliberations over the preparation of the report uh and its recommendations. And uh and to Mrs. David, with the work you do down there, um with your constituents, thank you very much. That survey work, which has produced those comments, which uh informed your opening statement um and on all your submission, uh will be very helpful as well. So once again, thank you to the three of you, and um and we appreciate the contribution you've made.
Thank you.
That brings me to the conclusion uh of the session this morning. Um. We will break now for uh what is in effect at our lunch break. It's early, but nevertheless, we'll break now. Uh. We're due back at uh at uh one ten P M uh sharp. Well, good afternoon, everyone, and we're returning to uh today's uh public hearing for our afternoon sessions, and uh thank you for rejoining us. Um. Our first group of witnesses this afternoon, uh thank you, they've all joined and are available to participate now. And uh I welcome Mr. John Fernando, Mr. Greg Packer, and Ms. Stacey O'Hara. So thank you very much for making your time available. Um. What we need to do is get through what's called the formality of having either sworn or affirmed to give your evidence this afternoon. Um. And that will require each of you in order to state your your name, uh your position title, uh in terms of the organization you're representing this afternoon, or if you're by yourself uh as an individual. Uh. And then swear either an oath or an affirmation, whichever you prefer, the words of which have been provided to you, but if for some reason you haven't got them, please let us know, and we will provide them to you promptly. So, Mr. Fernando, starting with you, could you please um deal with the formality?
Yes, thank you, uh, to Chair. Uh. My name is John Fernando. I'm the chairperson of Riverina Murray Regional Alliance, which is a local decision-making model based in the Riverina Murray.
Excellent. And could you please, sorry?
My oath is, I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you, Mr. Fernando. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Moving on to Mr. uh Packer, uh the same for you. Hey, have you got your um?
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. Please proceed, Mr. Packer.
Yeah, my name is Gregory Wayne Packer. I'm a rep- a delegate of Riverina Murray Regional Alliance, and I can't find that 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 other thing that I've got to swear in, yeah.
Okay. Now, would you, would you normally swear either an oath or an affirmation? Which would you prefer?
An oath, we'll do maybe, yeah.
Uh. So if you repeat these words, so thi- these are the words that are used by the witness, so if I So if I, it's okay to do it this way, it works, works fine. So I'll read it slowly and if you could repeat, would that work for you, Mr Packer?
Yes, it will. Yes, thank you.
Okay, so I'll just write it slowly. I swear that the evidence now.
I swear that the evidence now.
About to be given by me.
About to be given by me.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you very much. That's great.
Thank you.
And moving now to Ms O'Hara.
Okay, so hello, portfolio committee members. My name is Stacey O'Hara. I'm the CEO of the Griffith Aboriginal Medical Service and also a member of the Maran Bigi Aboriginal Health Consortium.
Excellent.
I solemnly, sincerely and clearly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much, Ms O'Hara. And once again, on behalf of the committee, can I welcome, welcome all this afternoon. It's, it's great to have you. And once again, thanks for the making of your valuable time available for us. Can I acknowledge the submission that's been made, standing in the name of the Riverina Murray Regional Alliance? It's submission number 263. And I'm able to confirm it's been received, processed and stands as a submission to this inquiry and it's been uploaded on to the inquiry's webpage. So it now is evidence that we are going to be relying on as a committee as we deliberate on ultimately our report and recommendations. But the staff then provides us with an opportunity to add additional evidence from yourselves, oral evidence, by hearing from you directly. And the way we, we'd like to proceed, if you're agreeable, is that we'll, we'll, we'll ask you all to, if you, if you're able to do so, or you may have pre-arranged for an, an opening statement to be made. It doesn't need to go through the content of the submission because you can take that as read, we, we have that already. But an opening statement to, to set things up nicely and then once that's done, we'll, we'll share between ourselves questions that we hopefully can have a dialogue with you over. So does that, does that seem to be a reason why to proceed this afternoon? Okay, well, thank you. So in terms of the opening statement, I, I don't know whether the three of you have coordinated and there'll be three separate ones, or Mr Fernando will do one and perhaps Ms O'Hara, how, how have you got it arranged? Could I just inquire?
Yeah, if Mr Fernando can do mine and, and his, because we both represent the same, same committee and he is the chairperson of it.
Thank you very much, Mr Packer. And Ms O'Hara, are you able to or willing to give an opening statement this afternoon?
Yes, I am.
Great, great. Well, thank you for that. Well, then commence with Mr Fernando. So thank you and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, committee members, for hearing me today. Riverina Murray Regional Alliance would just like to make the opening statement that the health services in our region have diminished over the years. And one of the main things for us is to possibly address that issue of medical care and treatment in our regional and remote areas across the Riverina Murray region. And I'm hoping the committee can take on board some of the views that we presented and also to support the good work that our AMSs are doing in our communities and supporting them in, especially during the current COVID climate that's impacted Western New South Wales and a little bit, not as much as Western, I suppose, and Riverina Murray, but they are doing a great deal of work with limited resources, as we know. And that also goes for our local hospital, hospitals in our smaller communities, which are lacking, I suppose, in services and personnel. So my opening statement is that maybe we can, I highlight that sort of scenario for the committee members that, yes, we do have smaller communities out in our region. And yes, there are doctors and nurses out here, but they are very limited resource that are valuable to our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Fernando. And that's, that's very good. It sets us up nicely for questioning and adds some additional information to the, the content of your submission, which is, which is very useful. So thank you. Can we move now to Ms O'Hara? Can I invite you to make an opening statement?
Okay, so I'm mindful of the time for the opening statement. So most of the information relating to the Maran Bigi Aboriginal Health Consortium has been tabled. I also need to acknowledge the traditional owners of the land we work on, the Rajri people, and pay my respects to elders, past, present and emerging. The health status of Aboriginal Australians is well documented. We are one of the most vulnerable groups in the country with health standards way below that of other Australians. To us, health is not just the absence of disease or illness, it's about the holistic wellbeing. And often what impacts us as individual, individuals, sorry, also impacts our family and our communities. On average, our men continue to die 8.6 years earlier and our women die 7.8 years earlier than non-Arabian Australians. Accessing health services in the bush has always been a challenge for Aboriginal people. When mainstream services are available, a lot of our community are reluctant to access them due to past history have been excluded and marginalised. But perhaps the biggest obstacle is the actual lack of services, particularly in our more remote communities. A lot of communities need to travel to access services and in some cases do not have the means to travel the 200 or 300 kilometres, particularly those who rely on selling payments. Even those in paid employment often have exorbitant living costs and must prioritise whether or not accessing medical treatment is more important than feeding the family or registering the car. Local Aboriginal Medical Services partnered with primary health networks in the implementation of a chronic disease programme. This programme assists with transport, accommodation and consultation costs for clients with a diagnosed chronic condition. Unfortunately, the bucket of money allocated to this programme is spread very thinly on the ground and is often expended before the funded period expires. We've also partnered with the New South Wales Rural Doctors Network in bringing specialist services to Aboriginal medical services. This is working well, but again, funding needs to be increased to either expand services or increase the frequency of existing services to meet the growing demand. Working in partnership with our local health district, primary health network and the New South Wales Rural Doctors Network has allowed us to make some real progress in addressing health issues for our Aboriginal communities. We're on the right track, but there is still some way to go before we enjoy the same standards of health as other Australians. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms O'Hara. And that equally was a very clear and concise opening statement, which I'm sure will elucidate questions from committee members as we progress. So just to confirm, we'll, we'll share the questions between ourselves, opposition, cross-bench government. We've got our witnesses through to five minutes to this afternoon. So we'll get, get things underway and go to the unbothered sec or from the opposition.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you, Mr Fernando. Thank you, Mr Packer, and thank you, Ms O'Hara, for today's appearance. Ms O'Hara, you made mention in your opening statement, you said that a person would have to make a decision involving accessing medical treatment versus feeding the family or registering the vehicle. We heard evidence earlier that in rural and regional areas, non-Arabian patients make the same decision involving cancer treatment. Now, you've, you've highlighted that in fact, the challenge might even be, in fact, in fact fiercer. So what is the experience of Indigenous people accessing cancer, cancer treatment, chemotherapy, radiation, things like that?
I suppose it would be the same as for non-Arabian Australians. It's just that we do have some agencies that help, like local support groups can assist and a few others that will assist patients who need to travel to Sydney for treatment or to Wagga Wagga's to our trip from Griffith. Obviously, our outline, outline communities further. So if local support's not available, then people just don't make those trips and miss out on treatment.
Mr Fernando or Mr Packer, do you have anything to add on cancer treatment for Indigenous communities?
Yeah, it's Mr Packer here. I, I'd just like to make some comments about, around, around that.
Yep.
But there is not a lot of Aboriginal positions within, within, within that service. They're in, we've got hospital liaison offices in our hospitals, but there's no specialised Aboriginal identified positions in, in, in that area. And, and I've noticed that we're starting to get a lot more Aboriginal community members now that are getting cancer and, and they've just got no support when they get in there. They're dealing with non-Arabian people, which, and all of those people have got compassion and everything, but it's just around the cultural heritage side of things. They're, they're just not getting, getting around the cultural aspect of it. They're not getting that sort of service.
Now, you realise that we make recommendations to the government on the evidence that we, that. So what would you like to see in regard to Indigenous treatment?
Yeah. Well, me personally, I'd like to see more Aboriginal positions within, within that service and a lot more health promotions out there to Aboriginal communities around cancer for, for, for the community. A lot more education.
Okay, thank you. Now, Mr Fernando, in your opening statement, you talked about the challenges of smaller hospitals. So when you're talking about smaller hospitals, you're talking about MPSs and district hospitals. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Yep. So what are the, give us a bit of an insight into the challenges of treatment from an Indigenous perspective at those smaller hospitals?
I know of instance where someone has gone to a local smaller office and hospital, sorry, and they've seen the doctor and because their injury or their concern at the time cannot be treated right then and there, they're, they're directed to travel, like Ms O'Hara said before, 150, 160 Ks to a more regional centre such as Griffith or Wagga to receive that type of treatment. And we always go back to the component of, if you're living out west in the higher cost of living, you've got to make that choice where you either register the car or seek treatment for the injury or of that person or a family member.
What kind of injuries are you, are you talking about? What, what kind of?
So anything like a broken bone that could be set or stitches, major stitches, you know, we've got small kids people who work in the rural or rural industry and agriculture, there, some of their injuries can be very extensive and can't be treated at a local hospital. So they have to be transported maybe an hour and a half, two hours to a more, a more regional setting with specialists or doctors in those areas where they can be assessed and treated appropriately.
Now, I'll ask all, all three of you this question. We've had evidence and concerns expressed as part of our inquiry about the challenges of telehealth, which is a small hospital where there is not a doctor available and a nurse would get a camera or give a screen, laptop and relay information to someone else in a larger hospital in Sydney, Wollongong, Newcastle. Now, do you have concerns or had reservations expressed, expressed to you or problems with telehealth involving Indigenous clients? Ms O'Hara?
Yeah, look, during COVID, we had to close our doors at the medical service here for a few weeks. So telehealth was the only option that we had and we found that clients just were not comfortable with telehealth consults. So we just seen a big drop in people that weren't actually accessing any GP appointments even at a local level because of the telehealth and, and just that, I don't know whether it's a communication issue or I think just Aboriginal people are more comfortable sitting across the other side of a desk and having that conversation with the GP. So we, yeah, just had to open doors back up and just make sure that all our COVID safe stuff was in place. And, and we just seen an increase immediately in Aboriginal people coming back into the building and accessing.
Mr Fernando and Mr Packer, I'll ask you the same question, but back to you, Ms O'Hara. So what was the drop in patient visitation when you had to resort to telehealth? Was it noticeable? Was it significant? Was it a complete drop-off?
We probably go from each doctor seeing between 17 and 20 clients a day. That probably dropped down to about four.
Oh, okay. Okay, a significant drop. So that would be people who should see a doctor who simply just didn't. Yeah. Gentlemen, Mr Fernando, Mr Packer, what was your experience or the relay of information to you involving telehealth?
I think just in support of Ms O'Hara's comments, I think the, the scope of telehealth is one that's, yeah, it's, it's a viable service, but as Aboriginal people, we like to speak and speak to that person on a one-to-one basis. And there's, there's that clear distinct disconnection in having that face-to-face chat with a doctor or medical practitioner. And I think, like Ms O'Hara said, I think the drop in people seeking medical advice or treatment would, has significantly dropped across the region, not only in the bigger centres, but definitely in the smaller centres where they, they can't access a doctor unless they get online with a, you know, a phone call or a webcam based at a health centre that may be open at a certain time and may close at a certain time.
Mr Packer, anything to add that you've heard or picked up involving telehealth?
Look, I agree with, with what's, what's been said, but I think, I think there is an issue around if, if you've got a person in Sydney talking about, say, an injury or something like that and he's relaying it to a, say, to a nurse or something. Well, I just believe that they're not, not getting the level of care that they really need to. Could you relay it from a doctor to a nurse to a patient? You know, I think that's a major issue.
Absolutely. Thank you. Ms O'Hara, what has been your, your engagement with the Maran Bigi Local Health District? How do you feel about communication with the local health district?
We have a good, you shouldn't say that relationships with the local health district are based on people roles. But in the past, I've found that we haven't enjoyed a good relationship with our local health district. However, recent years, we've seen an improvement in that because different people come into roles and, and they just get along better with, with our staff here and, and they make a bit more of an effort, I suppose, than what, what's been shown to us in the past.
Now, can I ask all three of you about, I guess, the area of palliative care in rural and regional areas from an Indigenous perspective? Are there in fact palliative care services in your, in your local health district and in your areas of responsibility? Ms O'Hara?
Yeah, we've got local palliative care services, but there is an Aboriginal specific programme established in Wagga.
Mr Fernando or Mr Packer, do you know anything about that? And can you tell us, well, is it successful, unsuccessful, any areas of improvement?
Yes, I can, I can add to that. We recently became aware of an Aboriginal palliative care worker who was initially only employed on a part-time basis. I've since been informed that that person has been put on a full-time, into a full-time position. But the concern for me and I think for Ms O'Hara in our region is, is one person covering the Riverina Murray area. And we all know, we all need palliative care at some point in our lives. And we've got one person covering from Dunlequin in the, you know, north, northwest of the corner, going right up to Tummit, Kuta Mandra and all the, all the towns in between, Griffith, Hay, Aubrey and possibly Wagga. Your one person covering that whole region is, especially in the, the scope of the palliative care component of health is, yeah, I think it needs to be increased. Also, I need, I think they need to work more closely with our AMSs across, we've got, we have three AMSs across our region and I don't think there's been much cooperation, I suppose, in this area with our AMSs from MLHD, but that's improving because personnel have changed. And I know that that's one of the things that BRIMRA, which is a shortened version of our title, is that we're pushing for our region is that we need to be collaborative, collaborative in our approach to how we provide services to our community and supporting our communities and our AMSs.
Okay. One last, one last question. I'm mindful of time. One last question.
Yep, thank you.
COVID, COVID vaccination rollout, have you experienced problems down there? Are, are you getting supply? Are you getting it to the communities? Ms O'Hara? Ms. O'Hara?
Supply was an issue initially. We were getting a hundred and twenty doses a fortnight.
Hmm, sorry.
So that's now increased to four hundred and twenty a fortnight. And we're just, yeah, going crazy at the moment and jabbing everyone. So, yeah, we've really ramped it up.
Now, Mr. Fernando, Mr. Packer, anything to add on volume or is it similar to Ms. O'Hara's view?
It's it's very similar to Ms. O'Hara's. Ribmed is the one, the AMS based in Wagga. We were at a hundred and twenty per fortnight. That's been increased to four hundred. And we're also now running Saturday clinics to get the community in and get their first dose and hopefully the second dose, which is starting to happen.
Yeah. And and we're we're getting sort of sixty people through those clinics on the Saturdays and the Sundays too. So the first day we had was sixty clients come through to get get the jab and, yeah, so it's been successful those weekend months.
That's very good. Thank you, Mr. Q.
Thank you for that feedback. That's very helpful, Ms. Packer. Can we move now to the care?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Ms. O'Hara, in in your opening statement, you sort of touched on on past history and we've also heard from other witnesses in this inquiry about culturally safe services. Can you sort of expand on that and what recommendations we should be putting down to the government to make sure that the services are actually culturally safe and comfortable?
Cultural awareness training has been around for a long time for mainstream organisations. I know the local health health district has has done it over a number of years. But you can't change people's attitudes. You can have all the cultural awareness training on earth, but at the end of the day, you cannot change attitudes of people who who just aren't comfortable working with Aboriginal people. So I think to make services and programs more accessible for Aboriginal people, it's the Aboriginal employment. So having Aboriginal people employed in certain roles, you know, in a hospital, it doesn't have to be the cleaner or the cook. Start having some reception staff, frontline staff, that when Aboriginal people walk into a building, they feel a lot more comfortable. And I think that's one of the first steps. I noticed at Griffith, I don't know if the program still runs, I'm not aware that it does. Mental health is a big issue. So there used to be mental health trainees. So the Community Health Centre, the local community health centre recruited the person and then put them through the Bachelor of Mental Health through Charleston University in Wagga. It was a three-year course and that person still got to see Aboriginal clients with mental health conditions while they were going through that training. But just the amount of Aboriginal people that then were getting the necessary help they needed because the clinician was an Aboriginal person was just, it was really good to see.
Yeah, and and I guess that also goes to your comments earlier, Mr. Packer as well. And I know you were talking about cancer, but I know in the Alliance submission, you also talked about access to drug and alcohol treatment, for example, and the fact that none of it is being provided by Aboriginal people. You know, and and so I guess, you know, your comments before were about making sure that there were Aboriginal people working in that cancer area, but it's broader than that, isn't it?
Yes, it is. It's it's really around cultural competencies for all all staff. And, you know, I'd like to get it to a stage where, you know, where everyone across the board gets cultural competencies and we can all work together. But, you know, I just think that there's a huge gap between Aboriginal clients to to mainstream clients or white clients, whatever you want to call them. You know, I just think there's there's a major gap in it and it's you know, even now, like my sister went into hospital the other day and she's up there and she's seventy years of age and you know, she's not allowed to have any any family around her and she she is really finding it very difficult, you know, because she's got a large family and she's in hospital and, you know, she at this stage, she could could look at losing her leg and and, you know, and to know that we can't get up there to see her, that we've just talked to her on the phone, it's it's very hard and it and it's around the the cultural stuff that, you know, because of family ties and all that and and, you know, and speaking of isolation and all that sort of stuff, you know, you can be in a remote area and be isolated, but you can live in a live in a in a town like Wagga Wagga with sixty-five thousand people and still be isolated. You know, because, you know, there's a there's not a lot of Aboriginal people out there that are that are working, there is work like in government and all that sort of stuff, but but most Aboriginal peoples live from week to week and they they can't budget and save money for any emergencies that come up in their lives, you know. And, you know, and if you if you want to look at improving health, I think with the, you know, if you're living in Hay and you've got to go to Wagga, well, you know, and and you say you'll go and whatever money is spent, save all your receipts and all that and we reimburse you, there there should be, it should be around the other way, whereas if someone's got to go somewhere and they can put in and 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 get some travel allowance before they go to to get there. At the moment, they're not getting there.
Yeah, yeah. And and your submission also talked about Aboriginal people could be traumatised by needing to attend services that are not on a country. What what is the best way to address this? Is it about making sure that there are services available as much as possible and prioritising cer- certain services in certain areas?
Yeah, I can answer that. On our host is John Fernando speaking. One of the components for BRIMRA in the negotiating with New South Wales Government under our court process is a Cultural Recovery and Healing Centre that we've actually looked at any AOD healing or rehab centre is basically a mainstream service that's been provided. We know there's one in Wagga and we know the waitlist for that is about three to four months for someone to actually get into it. But it's a mainstream one, it's not culturally safe for some of our people who go in there and for them to attend a culturally safe one, we have to travel two hundred and thirty, two hundred and forty Ks to Kaera to wear jelly from Wagga. So that's just Wagga. And the next one, I think, is Ulong. Over an hour or so, we we're working with New South Wales Government and we're conducting a feasibility study at the moment to build our own cultural recovery and healing centre on country here for our people because we know we we do have people here with a lot of AOD issues and one of the biggest ones for them now coming through is mental health. And I know Ms. O'Hara has talked about mental health, you know, we need we need staff to be trained up in those fields coming through the health system because we need our own people to look after our people in our region. And hopefully, when we, if we are able to get this cultural recovery and healing centre up and running and on country, we can start filling those vacancies with local qualified people who've been through the system. And now they can work on country and support their family, their family, friends and, you know, their relations possibly in the future.
Thank you, Fernando. Thank you, Chair. Kate Fermin, can I invite you to?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you all for appearing and the very excellent work you do supporting your communities and advocating for your communities. I just wanted to pick up Mr. Fernando on the excellent the excellent idea, the excellent proposal that you've just been talking about in terms of a cultural recovery and healing centre. Could you tell the committee, kind of if you're able to, where that's up to, the reception it's getting, whether whether you think it's going to 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 be approved and what more we could potentially do to support it?
Yes, we're in the, in three stages at the moment. We've just had a tender process went out and we've engaged a company called Nyugura Access Company. I think they're based in Sydney, but there's connections with some of their workers who actually come from our region because they claim Rangere as their home country. And these guys are going to be working with us and MLHD, the Merrimba Ghi Local Health District and Regional New South Wales and Treasury, looking at visiting our communities. Because BRIMRA is made up, BRIMRA is made up of ten community across our region and they're going to visit all those communities, ask the question about how do they feel about AOD services, mental health? What's in their community that works? What doesn't work? What would they like to see? And we're hoping to build a proposal with their help. They've been given, I think, six months to develop this proposal. It was as part of our accord negotiations under Nungalala Lee with New South Wales Government. This is one of the things that we put forward as one of our priorities because it's something that it's a holistic approach. We can treat not only the person who's having those issues, but also look at supporting the families around them because as we know, if someone's in treatment, they've got to go travel three hundred Ks away to be treated. It's very lonely and it's very hard for them to stick at it for twelve weeks to get through the programme. If we've got one in our region, it may be a day trip for them with support services, bring them in after three or four weeks after they've done the initial hard yards and, you know, offer that support to them to continue. To come back to their family, a better person, and hopefully address some of those issues and be be a more constructive community member in regards to not committing. We know people with those sort of issues, they tend to be picked up by the criminal justice system very quickly for minor things and that just escalates. We call it the trifecta, one, two, three, you know, you stop, you search, you resist, you go bang, bang, bang. And we're now part of the criminal justice system, which is unfortunate. But if we can address some of the AOD issues, mental health that in our local region, I think that'll have a big impact, not only on that person, but the community as a whole across the region.
Thank you. Yeah, I am sure not a single member of the committee thinks otherwise, that this sounds like an incredibly important thing to support for so many reasons. So thanks for for bringing that to the committee's attention. I did want to ask you about the ten priorities as well that the Alliance identified or prioritised in the regional priority plan for two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-one. How are those priorities going? Because it's now twenty twenty-one. Have you seen any substantial kind of substantial outcomes in those priorities or because you've listed them in the, you've listed them in the in the submission? Now that it's twenty twenty-one, is it all pretty much the same in terms of those priorities?
Well, I think that those priorities are work in progress. We are working with the agencies that we're dealing with, state government agencies. And there's some stuff that we have an influence over or some sort of commitment to. And working with those agencies to change the way they work with our communities and our and our Aboriginal people is one of the one of the ways we do that. And through our court process, this is the stuff that we're changing. We've actually spoken to Regional New South Wales and we've put on the table that their staff and other government agencies have to attend a co-design Aboriginal cultural competency training package, like a one-day package where their staff come to and that's opened up a few eyes, but you know, like Greg and Stacey has relayed before, we can give all the training we want, but people will have their own personal views, but that's okay. We can just keep plugging away and changing the culture of the agency will eventually change the culture of the people who come through that agency.
Can I check in relation to that then? You spoke about the relationship with New South Wales Health before. So something with something as specific as that regional priority plan, who within New South Wales Health, like which part of the department do you have like direct discussion with and continuing contact with in relation to progressing that plan within New South Wales Health?
With New South Wales, we speak with the director for MLHD, I think her name is Jill Lutford. She's the CEO for MLHD. So we deal with, we meet with her for our Nungalala Lee Accord process once every four months, I think. And we go back to our priorities, looking on a scheduling and we identify stuff that we we need to work on. The Cultural Recovery and Healing Centre was one of the major ones for us in that regard. It also is the healing of our communities. We've had a healing forum a few years ago. They were a big part of that, as were our communities. And every time we speak with them, we are we are about developing opportunities for our communities. And one of the biggest ways for that is for us to encourage the, you know, the advertisement of Aboriginal identified positions and we need to start targeting some of those industries or those occupations that we are that are emerging, especially around mental health and possibly cancer treatment down the line because we know, we know full well, the Aboriginal person will suffer a lot more illnesses over their lifetime than the normal person. And it'll impact them more greatly if they're not treated and looked after during their lifetime.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do have one more of yours. It's just specifically about the recommendations that might even go to you, Ms. O'Hara, to to share, share things around. But it's specifically in relation to the lack of the lack of Aboriginal health professionals and the the you've highlighted that this is an issue. Can I can I ask the specific recommendations that you may have put to the LHD or New South Wales Health to attract more Aboriginal professional, health professionals, but people to train in those professions? What is lacking and what recommendations can we make in that regard, do you think?
Okay, so at the Griffith Aboriginal Medical Service in particular, what we do is when we employ people, we understand that they might not be coming in with the necessary skills and experience to work within Aboriginal communities. But then the primary healthcare, cert foreign primary healthcare is a minimum standard that we require our staff to undertake within the first two years of employment. The Aboriginal Health College was good. They used to run a lot of courses, diploma in counselling, diploma in AOD services. They did cert foreign primary healthcare, but there was an issue with the college and so there was a bit of a break in training for a bit. So our staff at the moment are just doing those through TAFE New South Wales. But like I said before, the more high-end psychological, mental health training is what we're really after is, you know, there used to be nurse cadetships, for example, where Aboriginal people went in and worked within the hospital system and did their nursing as part of the on-the-job training. It's those sort of things where people can actually earn some money as well as gain the skills and qualifications while they're working. So they're still actually supporting their family, but then they're gaining the necessary skills to to make a difference in all their communities across the region.
Thank you very much. So I'll move now to government witnesses, but before they start, I'm just wondering if someone from the secretary could just let the next panel of witnesses know, we're just running a little bit behind because the government must must get its full allocation. So we'll get underway. Who'd like to take the call from the government?
Thank you, Chair. If if you don't mind, I'll I'll kick off the questioning. I wanted to thank, thank you, Chair, and I just wanted to to thank all the witnesses for appearing today and of course, I know many of you through my work in the local area. And so I wanted to start with Mr. Fernando and we know that healthcare is so often tied to prosperity and Mr. Fernando, can you talk about how it's, there's a need for making sure that indigenous youth, particularly in the Riverina, are are able to access not only proper healthcare, but also jobs and education in order to ensure that they have the tools moving forward to to be able to increase their their participation in in the community and also their their prosperity moving into the future and how that affects their their health in later life. And I'm not sure if I've got you because I've just had all the screens freeze.
We can hear, okay, Wes.
Oh, okay, because I've, everything's just frozen, but then I've, yeah.
I think I got the.
Yes. I've got you, yep.
Do you want the question repeated, Mr. Fernando?
No, no.
I wasn't sure whether I was still broadcasting or not.
Yeah, I think I I think I got the gist of the question. It's basically speaking about youth and how. It's basically speaking about youth and how health impacts on their prosperity in leading into later life. Is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah. And how we, you know, how important it is to actually, you know, a good, get a good start early. And that's supported by not only healthcare, but the other factors as well.
Yeah, yeah. My, my take on that, Honorable Mr Fang in the committee is that if, if we, we need to support our youth early in, early stages of life by providing the medical services for them to continue to not only get strong and fit and able to, you know, eat a, eat a healthy breakfast and come from a good family unit to go to school, learn what they can at school. Because I know even from my background is I had a bit of a disjointed background, but I had a supportive auntie and uncle who made me go to school and get an education because I know the value of an education. And to do that, you need to be healthy and you need to, you know, drink your milk, eat your sandwich and lunch and not skip and stay away from the junk food, which is prevalent across our region.
And what are some of the risks that we, oh, sorry, what are some of the risks that we might see with the youth, particularly with your experience, Indigenous youth, if they don't have those opportunities? Now, I noticed that you talk about, you know, the lack of, you know, for example, facilities for rehabilitation or drug alcohol problems, you know, if, if, if they fall into that trap, how hard is it to actually then, you know, get them to, to recover out, particularly with cultural issues around rehabilitation and the like?
Yeah, culturally, just for the committee's notice, I've got twenty years with corrections. So I've been down that path in the adult system. I've seen them come through the juvenile system. And if we don't offer those kids the opportunity to make positive changes in their life at that stage, and one of those big thing is the, the use of AOD substances, you know, alcohol. The, the good one for us is the Yandi and not so good now is the harder drugs, which is ice is prevalent in our communities. And if we don't have, you know, the counsellors or the AOD workers or social emotional workers supporting that family and kids, how are these kids going to go to school and learn when they're all over the place? Trying to survive, I suppose, in an environment that's not conducive to them. The best way for us is to support our, our medical people and give them some shining lights, give them some role models. Because we need to see Aboriginal faces and bodies in our health service. So these kids can aspire to be nurses, doctors, counsellors. Because at the moment, when they go to a mainstream hospital, all they see is a lot of, a lot of non-Indigenous people, doctors, and they also see a lot of overseas doctors there working and the opportunity is there for Aboriginal people and said, why aren't we getting the same opportunity? Because we don't have that backing, I suppose, of the family unit, which is impacted by mental health or AOD. And we need to support our health services in our regions because I know the smaller regions, we, we lack, we lack that type of service, that sort of support. And we definitely need to increase the, you know, the numbers of health workers within our AMSs to give these young kids a goal to say, I can do that, let's move on. And maybe if they train up enough, they can move on to the mainstream health system and make changes from internally as opposed to externally. I hope that I answered your question, Mr Fang. If not.
I don't know. Look, it does. I guess I'm just trying to tease out the, obviously, there's, there's issues around the provision of culturally appropriate drug and alcohol supports and rehabilitation in, in rural and regional areas, particularly for Indigenous populations. But, you know, in, in the first instance, I think that, and I was keen to know your experience, is it more important that we actually try to provide them a strong start with education, with employment, with prosperity in order that they don't go down that path in the first instance? Or, or is it important that we have those supports there if they do fall there? And I think it's a mix of both. And I was just keen to see your, your impression on it. But I think I've got that from your testimony. So I thank you for that. Now, I know my colleague, the Honourable Trevor Khan, had a couple of questions, so I'll pass to him and I'm assuming he's on.
The Honourable Trevor Khan. Good afternoon. I think I'll address my question to Ms O'Hara, but please don't take it that I'm simply hopefully speaking to Ms O'Hara. Ms O'Hara, I'm interested in your insights into the opportunities for access and indeed the accessing of preventative health services by the Aboriginal community. I'm thinking of such services as breast screening and whether that is appropriately provided to the Aboriginal community.
So preventative is always better than the other options, isn't it? Look, breast screening is accessed by a lot of Aboriginal women. But again, it goes back to the same thing that Mr Packer was talking about. If we see more black faces in these jobs, you would see more Aboriginal people accessing these services. Yeah, it's all women's health or women's business, which is probably, it's just got that little bit of a shame factor, which we've been working on over the years to try and encourage Aboriginal women to access services. You know, prevention's better than the cure in the long run. So it's a hard one. We've done a few campaigns over the years where we've, we've done peer support stuff. So we've had some local women who have had their pictures put on posters and, and brochures. And we did some training with those women. So other women in the community could then go and speak to these locals because they've done some training and they've done a bit of background on how quickly lumps can be detected through breast screen, you know, and it, it works, but it's just that it's getting over the, the shame that some Aboriginal women feel.
Do you think there is anything more that we could recommend that could be done that would and will deal purely with breast screening, that could be done to make breast screening more accessible to Aboriginal women? Particularly in rural and regional areas?
I'm not quite sure how far they go out into the, the more remote communities. I don't know whether they travel out to, say, Hillstone, which is a hundred Ks north of, of Griffith. But there used to be the, the breast screen van that was fully equipped and it would go out to the more remote communities and set up for a couple of weeks at a time. And it would give women the opportunity then to access those services rather than having to drive a hundred Ks or two hundred Ks to access a service. And, and you could probably double that. So it's a total women's health clinic. So it not only dealt with breast screen, but it dealt with all the women's health issues.
Chair, there's a lot more I could ask, but I am alive to the timeframe. So I think I'll leave it there at this stage.
Thank you, Donald.
Sorry, I think Fernando wants, wants to say something.
It's Greg, it's Greg, sorry. I just think that, you know, like there's, there's always a nursing shortage and, and like, Stacey and I go back in health for thirty-odd years. You know, we were sitting around the table thirty years ago, talking about exactly the same stuff we're, we're talking about now. You know, and I just think it's, it's tragic that we're, we're still doing it, you know, like. And, you know, and even if we can't get Aboriginal people in those centres, we need to make those centres culturally appropriate that Aboriginal people can actually walk in the door. You know, and it could be, it could be, you know, Aboriginal paintings, you know, in the corridor, you know, just to make them more culturally appropriate for Aboriginal people to walk in, into doors, you know, like. You know, I know a new hospital, like, you know, we engage a lot of Aboriginal artists to, to do some stuff around the walls and paintings and all that. So, and, you know, I, I just, I just think we just need to come up with some way. And it's not only for Aboriginal people, it's for, it's for all nurses, like if you're talking about nurses right across the board. We need to look at some sort of package that's going to give people incentives to want to be a nurse. And, you know, like, and then, you know, maybe we could waive their, all their fees and all that sort of stuff and say, okay, we'll waive your fees, but we want you to stay in that remote area. When, when you, when you graduate, we want you to stay in that remote area for five years after your employment. And then you can move on and we just, we just keep turning them over because we're getting, we're paying a lot of money for overseas nurses and all that. And, you know, and it's just, we just don't seem to be doing anything. We're paying out more money and recruiting from overseas where we, where we should be recruiting from our own people here in Australia. And, and that's the way that I reckon I should go. Like, I remember twenty-five years ago, I sat down at a state meeting and they said that seventy-five percent of the nursing staff throughout New South Wales was, was close to sixty-five years of age and they're all going to retire. You know, and what do you do then? You know? And I just think we just need to start thinking strategically on, on how we can have a better working system for everybody across the board, you know?
On that note, can I thank you all very much for making yourself available today? The, as I indicated at the start, the submission that was made provided a platform with much information and that's been much expanded, I think, over the course of the questioning. And can I particularly express our gratitude to the very specific examples that have been given as well? We would otherwise would have liked to have travelled and been able to meet with you face to face. But with COVID and other restrictions, that's not been possible to do so. But the, the firsthand examples that you've all been able to give have given us some very good insights into the, the issues confronted by our Indigenous brothers and sisters. And we're looking forward to take that information into account when we develop our report and recommendations. So once again, on behalf of the committee, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move next to the last set of witnesses today. I do apologize for the slight delay. Well, good afternoon, gentlemen, doctors. Thank you for joining us this afternoon in our last session. Can I commence by apologising for the slight delay before getting to you? My name's Greg Donnelly and I'm the Chair of the Committee. We need to deal with the formalities first of having you sworn or affirmed to give your evidence. So starting with Dr Pritchard, I'll get you to start your full name, your position title, and to swear either an oath or an affirmation, whichever you prefer, and the words of which should have been provided to you. If for some reason you don't have them, please just let us know. So we'll start with Dr Pritchard.
Thank you very much and thank you for allowing me to address you all. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you very much, Dr Pritchard. And, and moving to Dr Mara, if you could do the same thing. Name, position, title, either an oath or an affirmation. Thank you, Doctor.
It's Paul Raymond Mara. I'm formerly President of Rural Doctors Association of Australia and a rural practitioner in Gunda Gai in New South Wales. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you, Doctor. And once again, doctors, thank you for joining us this afternoon. We're going to look forward to the evidence from two people who are very experienced in, in matters which are before this inquiry. Can I just acknowledge, Dr Pritchard, your submission? It's been made, received and processed by the Committee Secretariat and stands as submission five eight six. So that is thus evidenced to the inquiry. And what we would like to do, if you're both agreeable, is invite you in order to make a, an opening statement. Keep it relatively brief, if you could please, and then that will give us maximum time for questions and exchanges between committee members and yourselves. So are you okay if we proceed that way? And that'll, and that'll take you through the duration to the end of your session. Does that, does that work okay for you?
Fine, thank you.
Thank you, doctors. Well, Dr Pritchard, can I invite you to make an opening statement?
Yes, I'm a retired specialist surgeon. I worked mostly in three major hospitals in Sydney, particularly at Prince Henry Hospital. And when that was being wound down, I moved out to Tumit, where I'd been as a kid. And practised for the South West Loire area here, which is the Tumit Hospital, which really was a regional hospital for the, from Gunda Gai through to Tamperumba. I did that for about thirteen years, then retired and worked for two years as the as the Director of Medical Administration for the Southern Area Health Service. My, my submission is basically what I've got to say, except that Snowy Valley is now booming. Partly because of COVID virus, but we have major industries like the busy mill and timber industry and mountain recreation and so forth. So we're a growing area and that's all I'll say at the moment, I think.
No, thank you, Doctor. I'm sure that sets it up nicely and the committee members, I'm sure, will have some particular questions, given your depth and experience in, in previous roles you've had. So that's fine. Dr Mara, can I invite you to make an opening statement?
Well, thank you very much. Thanks to the committee for allowing me to make a presentation to answer questions. I forward my introductory comments to the Committee Secretariat and I'm not sure if people have those available. And if they do, I can truncate my comments a little bit. Firstly, I pay my respects to the traditional custodians of the land and to elders past and present. I've been a rural doctor in Gunda Gai practising with my wife, Virginia Rice, for almost thirty-nine years. For two decades plus, I also worked in Shearmit, providing anaesthetics and obstetric services. I was a founder and president of Rural Doctors Association, undertaking consultancies and published widely on rural medical workforce. And by way of background, I've also attached a citation made to me by the then President of the Australian Medical Association when I was made a Fellow of the Australian Medical Association. There is no doubt that there is a rural medical workforce and service meltdown across the Riverina and other small towns across New South Wales and Australia. Yet both Commonwealth and State have spent hundreds of millions of dollars or even billions of dollars of taxpayers' money over many years on policies that have failed and organisations that have not been accountable for outcomes. All small towns across the country should be asking the question, where has the money gone? It seems that with the money spent, we could have sent a person to the moon, but not a doctor to hay. There has been a thirty-year failure of policy and policy that has supported failure. Yet the problem, I believe, is not intractable and not unsolvable. It's time to call it out. Rural general practice trading providers have failed to deliver. Practices across rural and motor Australia have dedicated into training and supporting a revolving door of doctors who simply head back to the city on completion of their training. People in the bush are paying taxes to train doctors to feed large corporate medical businesses in cities and major centres. Workforce agencies for all the money and sometimes their personal efforts have failed to deliver on their fundamental rebit. The College of GPs itself does not accept that rural practice is not simply general practice in a rural area. There is a fundamental lack of understanding of the nature of the medical workforce problem. In rural areas, the medical workforce deficit relates to workforce capacity to provide comprehensive and continuing services across a range of settings, including after-hours emergency and hospital-based services. In metropolitan areas, the perception of not enough doctors is driven by the number of practices not medical need. Too many practices creates hyper-competition for doctors to service business needs, medical needs of patients. Anyone can set up a medical practice and an open Medicare scheme. Current methods of engagement and ways in which we pay doctors have created a perfect medical workforce storm. Medicine is no longer about service models. We have moved even beyond the built-for-profit model. Investors are now being funded by the taxpayer through Medicare to establish built-to-sell models of medical practice. Practice is a unique and demanding discipline that requires specific training, flexible practice models, innovation, investment and real incentives. For some years, I've been promoting a new model of medical workforce support, employment, training and service delivery in the Murrumbidgee. This solution has been enthusiastically taken up by the current CEO, CEO of the MLHD, Jill Ludford and her team. It involves the MLHD taking on responsibility for employing trainees for a two-plus-four-year specialist rural drop-the-praining programme. It is supported by the New South Wales Ministry and Government. The programme is providing more flexibility and higher-quality training in both major hospitals and rural practices. It is using available resources and has raised considerable interest among medical students and junior doctors. It will change the churn culture and provide more certainty for communities and it could deliver ten new doctors in the district next year and more every subsequent year. This provides a medium-term sustainable solution. So what's the problem? The Commonwealth Department of Health, while perhaps recognising the elegance of the solution, in spite of the fact that similar employment arrangements applying Queensland and other jurisdictions, says the programme is against health funding arrangements and agreements and has thrown out the tie spikes, limiting the number of entrants into the programme. The model has the status of a pilot only. Meanwhile, the MLHD is having to spend millions on low first and propping up failed rural practice services that rightly are the firsts and propping up failed rural practice services that rightly are the responsibility of the Commonwealth to solve access problems for people living in rural remote towns across the Riverina. Management and bureaucracy are about doing things right. Leadership is about doing the right thing. If we want a different outcome, we need to do the right things differently. Practices and communities need action now to build confidence in rural medicine. If we want to find out why many small towns across the Riverina, state and country don't have well-trained doctors available to service their comprehensive healthcare needs, we need to look to Canberra and follow the money. There are incentives now in the system that mean that we should be continuing this workforce crisis. The crisis in rural medical workforce is a crisis in policy, not doctor numbers. To resolve the problem, we need to stop rewarding failure and make policy and organisations accountable to outcomes. Does in practices determine the viability, quality and effectiveness of the so-called sole employer model of rural generalist training in the Murrumbidgee and not bureaucrats in Canberra? Mandate that every doctor, regardless of preferred specialty, work in a rural community, modified modash level four or above, for at least six months prior to entry into their preferred vocational training as part of a mandatory three-year residency post-graduation. Both new practices and particularly metropolitan areas by introducing a licensing system that takes into account local health needs and demonstrated capacity of the proposed practices to deliver on these needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr Mara. And that was a very comprehensive opening statement, which ranged over a number of issues, which I'm sure will come up in the questioning. So thank you very much. So we're going to ensure that the time allocated for yourselves, which was a 45-minute block, is carried forward, notwithstanding the delay. Is that okay if we make sure we get the full 45 minutes for yourselves? That'll, I mean, we finished a little bit earlier, but I just want to check with you that that's okay? Yeah, thank you. So we'll allocate the time left for the duration between opposition and crossbench and government members, and we'll share it round. So we'll commence with the Opposition, the Honourable Walt Secord.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, thank you, doctors, for your evidence and your opening statements. Now, Dr Mara, now I do understand that much of your introductory statement related to GPs, which in fact come under mostly federal, because we're a state inquiry and a lot of the evidence that we had presented to us related to concerns about small country hospitals, MPSs, district hospitals, and the inability to retain or attract doctors to those facilities. So what advice and experience that you have that we could recommend to the state government on getting doctors, especially coverage particularly on weekends? And so what advice or recommendations could you suggest in that regard?
Okay, some years ago, I undertook a consultancy looking at what constituted a viable or sustainable model of practice in a rural remote area. On rural practices, I said in my introductory comments, cuts across divide into a secondary-level system of care. And this is where we have problems at the moment. There are three pillars, if you like, that ensure sustainable medical practice in a country town that provides those viable services. The first pillar relates to the structural areas around practice. I alluded to some of these in my introductory comments, but if you don't have a proper structure and proper infrastructure in which to practise in, then you won't attract a doctor there. The second pillar relates to the professional components, and these include such things as on-call time and workforce in the area. There's no doubt that doctors beget doctors, and if you have capacity, the amount of after-hours and the workload is reduced, and that has a big impact on capacity to draw doctors into the system. The third area relates to remuneration, and there's too much emphasis based on improving rebates or improving payment for doctors. I think the money's there, it's just now if you don't have appropriate systems in all those areas, you don't have a sustainable practice in that town. And what we've seen then is that we can't just segregate out the towns and say, there's a problem here. We have to look at the system. And what I've tried to look at was show that where you've got the state looking after the hospitals and the Commonwealth looking after the general practice, there hasn't been a link between those two areas, and that system faults in both areas are creating the problem. And so it's for this reason I believe that the solution lies as I put forward. The Murrumbidgee Rural Generalist Training Programme, at the Commonwealth level, because allowing more doctors to come into that, and frankly, if it hadn't have been for the delays implemented by the Commonwealth, we could have had 15 or 20 new doctors coming through that programme, working in rural and regional areas and getting adequate training, than the current five which we have at the moment.
Dr Pritchard, do you have anything to add to Dr Mara's comments?
Yes. We've got plenty of GPs in our town, but they, also the business structure that they have, they don't want to go to the hospital particularly. And I think there should be some compulsion for the doctors to spend some time in the rural areas, as Paul says, before they get full registration or let us. One of the problems is that the area health service is letting us down a bit because we've got a new hospital at Chumit, which drains a big slab of New South Wales. Yet we don't have a resident anaesthetist, which for emergencies is essential, there's not one between here and Wogga. We don't have a resident, we have surgeon, GP surgeon. We have one GP obstetrician who's limited because he hasn't got an anaesthetic backup, and he can only do extremely simple deliveries. The deliveries in the last twelve, last few years have dropped from 150 per year to 50 per year. And so people are not coming to our area, whereas they don't think we've got an adequate health service. In fact, people of my age are leaving the area to go to somewhere, not that they're going to have babies, but they go to somewhere where they have easy health service. Overall, the health service is fantastic. The other area of concern is that we can't get GPs' proceduralists to come to our area if the hospital is blocking them. The Chumit area health service, this is just, they talk about 16 acute care beds, four medical, four day surgery beds, four maternity beds and one palliative care bed. But the saying that day surgery is being promoted says to them that they can't do anything more than day surgery. No anaesthetist is going to come to town if there's only day surgery. And presently, the day surgery is done by a specialist doctor from Wogga and the anaesthetist coming into our town, doing the operation and going back over 100 kilometres through irregular terrain that day. They're not there overnight, not there to do emergencies. It's third-world practice, and it's been promoted by the area health service. We've got a new hospital, and it's still an operating theatre. They've got here a day surgery procedure unit. In other words, if a doctor sick of coming here and he looks up the paperwork from the area health service, he'll say, there's no place for me to come. You know, there's only day surgery. No anaesthetist can keep up his skills with that. No surgeon will come here, the obstetrician will be burnt out and frustrated somewhat, because you can't do this area inspection. The third world health service is phasing out these hospitals.
But Dr Pritchard, you've just, I'm not criticising you, you've just painted a picture of a problem that is you can't really solve.
Well, we can solve it, I think.
Well, okay, so what would you recommend that we do then?
Well, we have a shortage of labour and picking blueberries, but the government gets people from overseas and puts them there on their visa. We could easily, there are plenty of Australian-trained, English-speaking doctors in the South East Asian area, and I've trained a lot of them, and they're top-quality people. All we have to do is offer what the federal government's offering for the fruit biggest, and that is give them a provisional visa if they stay in an area for five years, and then they can bring their family and dog and whatever they like with them to stay there. It's a simple solution, and it's one that would be effective.
Dr Mara, do you agree with that?
Well, I think what Dr Pritchard's elaborated on is the problem, and the fact that we haven't addressed this problem systemically has meant that we've got this decline, which makes us out of that situation. And the reality is that if you look at the proposals that I put forward, having the training programme, requiring the Commonwealth government to put more people into that training programme, we could put doctors into Chumit next year, but a list of approved areas under that Commonwealth training programme. And that's a fundamental problem that we have. I mean, the Murrumbidgee Rural Generalist Training Pathway would be oversubscribed at the present time. We would have the doctors there. The other point that I would make is that the importation of doctors from overseas has been going on for years. We've brought thousands of doctors in from overseas, and yet we still haven't solved our workforce problem. Simply putting more doctors from overseas or more doctors through our medical schools is not going to change this situation. We have to look very carefully at the structure. Now, when I did medicine and when I became a rural doctor, 30-odd percent of the people that I graduated with became rural doctors. Now, there's 15% of medical graduates that want to do general practice. And so there's a fundamental structural problem in the way in which we do that. Now, where have all the rural doctors gone? Well, they've all gone to become emergency medicine specialists. Because it's contained, it offers flexibility, it offers employment on industrial options. And what the Murrumbidgee Rural Generalist Training Pathway does is it starts to create a new paradigm of service delivery, employment, industrial relations and flexibility. Now, if we can get that up and running properly, that will create that focus. But we have to move in that direction by looking again systemically at the stupid notion that we can allow any doctor, any failed doctor, any hairdresser, any plumber, any pharmacist to open up a medical practice anywhere, anytime. Because it's that increasing number of practices across the country which is sucking up the medical workforce to serve their own business models and not the health need models of the communities. And so this is what happened in the bush. And those doctors go back to these places where they're employed and engaged by these new practice models. So there's hyper-competition for doctors down in the metropolitan city areas in particular. So we have to address both of these areas. Now, the way in which I'm proposing we address that is to look at a proper licensing system for practices that ensures that if a practice is to be set up, then they have to demonstrate a medical need, they have to demonstrate a capacity and reliability in terms of what they want to achieve. And so you can't just take one item. And this is the point that I'm trying to make, is that unless you have an understanding of the workforce problems or the workforce determined in rural areas, vis-à-vis the workforce determined in the metropolitan areas, then we'll never solve this problem. You have to take it at two levels.
Dr Pritchard, did you want to add something to that?
It's just that when I was a boy, 80% of the students were male, and they usually married a nurse who often came from the bush. And so there's been a shortage of, that's what popped up with doing your service. But nowadays, they're married to, there are more females than males doing medicine, and they often marry one another or some other professional, and they don't want to relocate to the country areas. I think there has to be some degree of compulsion somewhere to get them to come to the country areas. But they won't come to our country area when they're only allowed to do day surgery. We don't have an anaesthetist on call on the weekends. So all the stuff with broken arms and dislocated shoulders and serious lacerations can't be treated here. They have to be sent across to Wogga, which is over 100 kilometres away, and during the bush fires, we had trouble transporting people. We have to have an anaesthetist or two, GP anaesthetist or two, in Chumit Hospital to service from Gundagai through to Tambarumba and beyond. I mean, it's all very, and we've had the COVID thing, and if they go, often go into respirators, and you need a skilled anaesthetist with anesthesia to put a tube in and put them on a ventilator. You know, it's serious stuff, and for a big area, if we're going to grow, we have to have that anaesthetic service.
Thank you, the Honourable Walt Secord, and thank you, doctors. We'll move now to the next set of questions coming from the crossbench members and invite the Deputy Chair, Honourable Amy Hurst.
Thank you, thank you, Chair, and thank you both, doctors, for coming in today and speaking with us. Dr Pritchard, I've just got a couple of questions following on from the Honourable Walt Secord and a couple of comments that you made. You were talking about, and I know in your submission, you also talked about Chumit getting a new hospital, but that it would only undertake that day surgery that you were talking about. Is that a downgrading from the current services that are available?
Absolutely downgrading. I mean, when I was at practice and Paul used to come and give anaesthetics and whatever, we serviced the whole region. But when you're criticizing that this is a day surgery hospital, that means it's not a general hospital, not a normal hospital. It's a definite downgrade.
And I think in your submission as well, you said that, you know, by changing it to a day surgery hospital, that it would be even harder to retain staff. Can you explain, you know, what the issues there are? I mean, we've heard so much in this inquiry about how hard it is to recruit staff already in certain areas and to retain them. How will this make it even more difficult?
Well, when I trained, I went down to Tasmania at one stage to be able to do hands-on surgery. I followed the jobs around to get my experience, because it's, you know, to restrict somebody just to do day surgery, it's stuff I used to do in my rooms mostly. And it's a complete downgrade. It's third-world to have a surgeon and an anaesthetist come from 100 kilometres away and go back that night. If there's any complication that night, what do you do? Pray, you know? There's a clinical, just to aggress it a little bit, there's a clinical care, critical service. Advisory service, which is available to the hospitals, but that closes at 11pm and open until 7am the next morning. So the nurses at the hospital, when the doctor's not, a doctor on call, have no backup at all. We need to have a balance in this area, for this area, we need to have a balanced health service.
Dr Pritchard, can I just ask you, what document were you quoting from there, just for clarity's sake?
The document?
The document you were just referring to, just for clarity's sake, was that a particular document you're referring to?
Yes, the Chumit Health Service. Oh no, this is the area of the Health Service. Yes, Dr McCall from the Area Health Service.
Okay, now, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, in that case, the price of all the hospitals that have this critical care advisory service, to all the hospitals in the Riverina, it's very good. But it closes at 11 o'clock at night, you know? And so the nurses are just abandoned, basically. And so they call for the ambulance, they send the patients all the way across to Wogga for which the doctor can fix up in no time.
And what's it like currently at Chumit Hospital? Is it currently adequately staffed and resourced? Or is there something that also needs to happen there in the interim, even while we're waiting to build this new hospital?
Well, the new hospital is to get built, but they're pulling down the old hospitals, so there's no area for accommodation for visiting doctors or students and things like that. Now, I think it's adequately staffed, except we don't have the visiting anaesthetists. We need more GP proceduralists, and the government has to address that problem. And they won't, and Paul knows well about it as well. But when I was a medical student, they offered you free holidays in the country areas. So you, and then the doctors, you'd go up there and stay at the nurses' home, and the doctors would take you out for dinner and show you around the area and try and marry you off to one of the locals. But there's a doctor shortage in rural areas, for instance, since I was a young medical student. That's a long time ago. We need to have some compulsion to get the distribution of the doctors correct.
And I just want to ask a question. There was something else in your submission that caught my attention. You said that medical practice has changed in recent years, and it's hard to get emergency coverage at the hospital. Can you expand on that and how it's changed and why it's harder to get that emergency coverage?
Well, as Paul was saying, that a lot of these Well, as Paul was saying, that a lot of these hos- medical practices are now groups of doctors as a business and they've got high overheads and receptionists and, you know, it's like a little business and for them to take a doctor out of that area to the hospital to spend half a day resuscitating something or doing an operation, it ruins their business, uh, the overheads. In the past, we had no trouble banning the doctors. I mean, it just was automatic, you know? Pointed to a hospital, you just did the, did the on-call work. You're hungry for work to get the experience so you can do your job properly. I can't understand why the doctors weren't presently doing it, apart from the commission, which is the pool we're rooted to.
And 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 what would you like to see from this inquiry as far as a recommendation, particularly in regards to some of um, the concerns we've talked about in regards to Tumit and, and, and the day surgery? And, you know, what, what are some of the recommend, key recommendations that you think will really support the area?
Well, I think Tumit Hospital should be recognized as a, as a regional, sub-regional hospital. I mean, Wagga's obviously the main hospital, that's a long way away, but Tumit needs to do, we even used to get patients back from the Wagga waiting list across here that want to come and get done in Tumit. And people from Kuma, having all that distance to be done in Tumit, was we could give them an incident service and if there's a problem, we're here. But that, but, uh, you know, we need, Tumit to advertise itself as a day surgery hospital, means we're saying we don't want proceduralists here. This is simple as that and it's repeated throughout the literature.
Thank you. And Dr. Mara, do you have anything to add to that?
Again, I think what we're looking at is the problems, um, rather than moving ahead to the solutions. And i- in the Tumit environment, there's far more doctors there than when Jeff and I were working together doing the, um, anesthetics and surgery. And and those surgical lists at that time, I mean, you know, Jeff is, is right. I mean, I'd be giving an anesthetic for a breast cancer mastectomy, for a, for a, um, fundi plication, for a varicose veins and, you know, a number of other things, all in the space of one, in one day. So, I mean, the capacity is um, do it, but the doctors aren't there. Now, the point that I'm making is, is it because of this interaction between the Commonwealth and state where you don't have a system, except for what we're trying to do with the Murumbidgee Training Program, to allow the doctors to work in their private practice and also work in the hospital setting? Now, if, if the Commonwealth said tomorrow, yes, we'll allow Tumit to be part of this so-called pilot, then we could have, uh, two procedural trainees in Tumit as soon as that's done. I mean, the demand from the, from the students is there. But, you know, thi- this has been hampered by bureaucracy and by organizations that have been funded with hundreds of millions of dollars to solve this problem. They've been part of the problem. They haven't been part of the solution. You know, when we put this proposal up to the Commonwealth, the major regional training GP provider in New South Wales actively sought to undermine it at the Commonwealth level. Now, to me, this is a scandal. That these, that these groups and organizations are being paid millions of dollars to solve a problem, yet in reality, the incentive is there that they keep this problem going.
Thank you, Doctor.
Unability amongst that.
Can I buy, sorry, Doctor. Can I buy Kate Femen?
Yeah, thank you. I've, I've only got one question actually. I was almost going to pass because most of my questions have been asked and, uh, time is running out and it's all, um, wonderful in terms of your, your evidence though. But I will just ask you a question on what you just said, Dr. Mara, in terms of the organizations that are actively blocking kind of the work that you do, if you like. And you just indicated the statewide training organization did it because they were incentivized to do it, I think. Could you please, could you, I'll just allow you a bit more time to expand on that, please?
Okay, so the, the, the way to get, um, training um, currently, the main way is through the regional training organizations. Now, the regional training organizations were established in regional areas with the remit to train people equipped and capable of working and providing workforce solutions in those regional areas. And over twenty years, there've clearly been a failure because we don't have the doctors that, that Dr. Pritchard has described with the skills and training to stay in those places. And when we implemented this new system, you know, there were representations made and behind the back undermining of the Murumbidgee Rural Training. Yet, you know, to me, and this was active, it wasn't passive, it was active undermining of the scheme. Now, the problem is that this scheme at the Murumbidgee involves a relationship between the doctor, the, the practice and the Murumbidgee Local Health District. There's no need to have third party involvement in that. And the, the market itself will, will, will say that we're down into the future. But, you know, we've got this sort of layers of bureaucracy that have hampered, not supported, um, or taken responsibility for workforce in these smaller towns. Now, for example, if you look right across the Murumbidgee Local Health District, you've got a number of small communities out there that were never going to get the benefits of this scheme because they weren't accredited to become part of the training program. So they were never, never going to get that workforce support at that level. Now, the solution that I proposed would see that all doctors would have to do a turn at an appropriate level and appropriately supervised in a rural area prior to them doing their vocational specialist training. And that would provide an immediate bang for the bucks, you know, across and graduates in medicine each year, I understand. And so you, you're putting a huge arithmetic number of doctors into those, into those smaller country towns at an appropriate level of their training, um, for a certain period of time. And you couple that with a, with a rural training program and you couple that then with, um, with attempts to limit the number of practices. Where you turn the whole system around.
Thank you. Do you have any further questions, Kate? Thanks very much, Kate. Uh, well, now I move to, uh, government members. Um, will it be the Honorable Wes Fang or the Honorable Trevor Khan, who, who wants to get the job?
Well, the Honorable Trevor Khan's indicating, um, so I'll let, uh, the Honorable Trevor Khan go first.
Honorable Trevor Khan. Thanks, Wes. I, I won't, uh, take up all the time and I'm going to direct my question to Dr. Mara. But I think Dr. Pritchard may have some comment as well. So can I just indicate to you, I come at, at this on the basis that my father was a GP literally for fifty years in Wollongong. Um, and my perception was, uh, that in the time that he practiced, the nature of general practice changed. And I think it picks up on some of what Dr. Mara said. That a lot of the procedure, small surgical work that he used to do in the surgery no longer is done by GPs. Uh, and indeed, they seem to shy away from that small procedural work. So I'm asking you, is, is that as a result of, is that as a result of the people who are being selected to do, uh, medicine? Or is it caused by some other, uh, element in the, whether it's the remuneration scheme or the like, that's changed the nature of, of, of most GPs from being essentially GP proceduralists to what seem to be referers to specialists and the like?
Yeah. I, I, I mean, I think that's, that, that's a question that has a lot of insight into the real problem that we're facing here. There's only fifteen percent of graduates from Australian medical schools now that want to become GPs. And the work of a general practitioner in a metropolitan area, um, I think is highly demanding. But the work of a rural doctor practice as well as those other elements. And the reality is, is that trying doctors in recent years to do both of those elements. And that's why you get the situation that Dr. Pritchard's describing in Tumit, where a number of the doctors there simply refuse to go on the roster or pack up and go to Sydney for the weekend and leaving the hospital, you know, and frankly, in the lurch. I mean, you know, Gundagai is probably one of the only towns across the Riverina that guarantees for the Murumbidgee Local Health Service coverage of the hospital area. Now, the point I'm trying to make here is that rural medicine, rural practice, is not general practice. General practice forms a large part of it. It's specialty. And until we see it as a unique discipline, which requires unique training and, and different flexibilities and different remuneration models, then we, we're really working behind, you know, we're working behind the scenes to counteract people getting into these areas. So we shouldn't be talking about GPs in the bush, although yeah, and that's great and we need them, we should be talking about rural doctors. And the concept of the rural doc the primary care area, but also the secondary care areas, I think is a very important component. It's only when we start to differentiate that we're going to start to see people wanting to move into that, down that direction because of the different benefits and advantages of, that they may see in terms of that career pathway. Now, if we look at the Queensland, um, Rural Generalist Training Program, which was essentially designed by the, by the Queensland Department of Health to fulfill their small hospital requirements for doctors working in those areas, surveys of those doctors said that if they didn't become a rural generalist, they would not have become a metropolitan GP. They would have become an anaesthetist or an obstetrician or an ED specialist. And I think if you ask most of the rural doctors in New South Wales now that are still doing the procedural work or still doing the after-hours, you know, they would say the same thing. I would have become myself, not a GP working in the city. And part of that reason is because the city GPs, unfortunately, and it's not their fault entirely, but they've abandoned a lot of that extended care that they used to provide, you know, GPs in the city used to deliver babies, et cetera, et cetera. You know, now, that doesn't mean that general practice in the cities, you know, cannot be a worthwhile proposition. I mean, it is. I mean, there's huge scope to provide adequacy of services, but it's different. And unless we recognize that difference, then we're not going to solve this problem in the rural workforce area.
Just to answer Trevor's question, Mr. Chair, it's more difficult to do the minor surgery in your office nowadays versus the the operations, so forth, that can be overcome. But it, it takes, takes time and the, the GPs are trained nowadays just churn through the patients and just can't do a minor operation. It takes a fair while, particularly as I did. I charged, I charged them all Medicare rebates and I didn't charge them anything out of their pockets. So, uh, that's changed enormously. Now, if they want something exciting, they get sent as, as specialists at Wagga. We, we books them into the day surgery center and there's, uh, the cost of all that is, and particularly for people that have to come from out of town and stay overnight. We're not doing this stuff locally. And we won't get the surgeons, the GP surgeons into our area if we can only allow them to do day surgery in the hospital. That's, half of that stuff should be done in your ruins and it costs nothing. I mean, it costs, I mean, it doesn't cost the patient anything, but, yeah.
Uh, Chair, if you, um,
Yes, please do. Uh, the Honorable Wes Fang.
Thank you, uh, and, uh, thank you both for, um, appearing today. And, um, obviously, uh, I, um, come from the, the region that you both, uh, live in and, um, I very much appreciate the, uh, the insights you provided to providing healthcare in, uh, the Riverina area, uh, in particular. And I think just leading on from, uh, the Honorable Trevor Khan's question, um, how much do you think the issue that we've seen, um, with attracting doctors to, uh, regional areas is, um, attributable to the, almost, uh, the continual reliance on the goodwill of, of, of doctors of the past, where they go to a rural regional area and they're just continued to be asked to do more, cover this on call, you know, do what, do another hour here, uh, you know, see another patient. Um, and, and it's just that continual, um, buildup of burden on them that, that other people then, um, I guess, see the lifestyle that, that has, um, been, uh, lived by, by doctors, um, in rural regional areas of the past and, and decide that, you know, it's too hard for them. Um, and how do you see that, um, being a GP versus a rural doctor is different? And what can we do about those rural doctors to make sure that they have, uh, a life outside of medicine? Um, when they do come to rural regional areas?
I look just, uh, the reason I came to Tumit was because during the war, my father moved the family down there for safekeeping. And my mother got an abscess around a tonsil and got a, what they called a quinsy. And fifty percent of them died in those days. And, uh, the two doctors came to our house and did the operation in the house and she obviously survived. It's, it's, I don't know what day of the week it is half the time, you know, it's, you, you're doing your medical practice. You, I've been on the council for years and, you know, getting involved with community activities and, yeah, it's such a wonderful life. And I'm sorry, I can't continue at this stage, but, um, yeah, I, I I'm not sure what answers, but I think you have to do as cool as to get some degree of compulsion for everyone to serve some time in the country areas. I think that's the solution, the lesson, the policy.
Can I just understanding of the true value of rural communities in the Australian society? Um, you know, part of this, I think, you know, really comes through, if you look at some shows on the ABCs such as, you know, the Backroad Show. I mean, they really come to the heart of what rural country's all about. Now, you know, each year for the, before the COVID pandemic, for five years, I took medical students from the UNSW up to Hamilton Island and Early Beach for the Sailing Race Week. You know, there were sixteen students that went up there. The whole aim of that was to show them that you didn't have to be confined or trapped as a rural doctor, you could do other things. And if we look at, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm talking off the hat, hat here about my personal life, but, you know, I've flown a plane three quarters of the way around the world. I've owned, I've owned a racing yacht and sailed around the world. You know, I've been mountaineering in Antarctica and New Zealand. I mean, being a rural doctor doesn't mean that you're inhibited. If anything, I think there's got more advantages around it. We need to be selling that sort of thing to the people that, that want to do it. Now, there are three parts to the Murumbidgee Training Program. It's not just about teaching people how to do anesthetics or obstetrics. It's about identifying the long-term continuous service needs in each of the communities and how you're going to best address that. It's about the training itself and what that training should look like to address the needs of those communities. And when the doctors are out there, it's about supporting them. And doctors beget doctors. We have to turn these smaller towns where you've got one burnt out and buggered doctor into a three or four or five doctor town so that they can continue to provide that continuity of services. And if we provide good training, flexible employment arrangements and support from the, the major hubs, then we can turn this whole issue around. And, but it has to be linked in with Commonwealth agendas and initiatives as well, you know? The, the, the answers really are there. It's just a matter of goodwill to actually take it. You know, and, and frankly, you know, I cannot stress enough, you know, when I first talked to the Commonwealth about this program and we had wide enthusiasm from, from the Murumbidgee confronted by these problems every single day. You know, we, we had acknowledgement from the politicians that this was the way to go. Yet it was held up in bureaucracy for two years and then limited to five people in the system, when we could have put fifteen in the system in the first year. And we can't continue to work where, you know, people with a spreadsheet on the fifth floor of the Sirius Building in Canberra, you know, make policy on this matter. And we can't continue to work with organizations that have been funded with millions and millions of dollars to solve this problem have negated their responsibility to it and accountability for outcomes. Now, why do we hold, don't fill up the hole? It's as simple as that, you know? So we've got to stop doing that and start demanding accountability and demanding outcomes and results for communities on the ground.
Thank you very much, uh, for you both providing your insights today and, um, I really do appreciate it. I think it's been valuable for us and, um, uh, taking the time out to, to speak to us has been, um, uh, particularly rewarding for me. So, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Wes Fang. And, uh, can I echo the Honorable Wes Fang's, uh, thanks to you both um, for, uh, very thoughtful, uh, contributions today, which has really taken us very deeply into some key areas, which, uh, we will need to give consideration to with respect to the development of our important recommendations. And it's been wonderful to have two gentlemen, two doctors of such enormous experience being able to reflect over not just some years, but decades of professional life and, and inject that into, uh, what is our current inquiry. And, uh, whilst I'm, I'm here, can I just acknowledge the combined service? I, I don't know if one adds the two, two lots of doctors' services together, but I expect it's probably perhaps in excess of maybe seventy, eighty years of, of service to communities in New South Wales. And, uh, I don't get the opportunity to thank professionals like yourself very often, but that's just an enormous contribution you two gentlemen have made with your professional medical service to the citizens of the state. with your professional medical service to the citizens of the state. And I'd like to take the opportunity to thank you both for doing that and, uh, serving the people so well and your respective communities. Thank you very much.
Thanks for asking this.
Um, thank you very much, uh, to everyone who's joined us today. That brings us to the conclusion, uh, of our hearing today. I'll just check with the secretariat, is there anything that you wanted to us to, uh, to comment on or, or, or mention before we conclude?
No, Chair.
Thank you, Vanessa. So on behalf of the committee, uh, thank you all for participating today. Uh, handstart for today, and indeed yesterday, uh, is being prepared, uh, will be prepared at the conclusion today, obviously, for today's checked and be then, uh, placed on the, uh, website, uh, for the inquiry. And that probably will take just a small number of days. So all the content of the very valuable evidence for the two days will be available pretty quickly for people to review. So whilst again, thank you very much and we'll, uh, forward seeing our next hearing. Thank you very much.
Good, very good.